Thank you all for being here tonight. We understand that we delayed the meeting, and I apologize for the delay, but our afternoon meeting and CRA meeting went a little too long, and I want to thank you for your patience for us remaining with us. So for those of you who are here for the first time, I want to welcome you all. And just to let you know, a few of the processes that we follow, we start out with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we have a moment of silence, and then there are some announcements, and then we do some presentations. And we have a couple of very important presentations tonight, so if you could please remain in the meeting so that we can enjoy those moments and share it with everybody here in the room. So I would like to ask Shawna Roberts, Brooklyn Hibbert, and Giselle Williams to please join me at the podium as we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. Thank you. Turn around. Over on this side. Over on this side. No, no, no. Over on this side. Okay. Modern family. Very nice. Thank you. Okay. Now, if you could please join me in a moment of silence, and within that moment, we'd like to also remember Jesse Adderley, Jean Drake, and Brian Yukna, who have recently passed away. Thank you all. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Herbst.
Vice Mayor Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Commissioner Sturman.
Here.
Mayor Trentalis.
So often before we begin our meeting, I like to recognize people who have worked for the city of Fort Lauderdale and who are now retiring. So I'd like to recognize Greg Wolfe, Beach Patrol Lieutenant and Fire Rescue, who has been with us, is this right, 50 and a half years?
Oh, wow.
Amazing. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. I also would like to recognize that today, I believe it's today, is former President Carter's 100th birthday. Congratulations. God bless him. We have a couple of agenda announcements. NP-1 has been removed from the agenda. Mr. Ray is unable to attend tonight.
Okay, which one is that now?
That's the neighborhood presentation.
Okay, hang on.
He's gonna, he wants to request to speak in November, which is fine. And then Commissioner Sturman, you asked that OFR-2 be deferred to October 15.
Yes, I would appreciate that.
So we'll just remove that, and we'll just re-advertise it. And then there'll be two walk-ons tonight. Motion approving a lease agreement between the North Broward-Husville District and the City of Fort Lauderdale for the Broward Health Park at Imperial Point, honoring Dottie Mancini and substantially the form provided that I think we all have. And also a second walk-on, which is a resolution requesting the School Board of Broward County to retain possession of school sites considered for closure in order to preserve an opportunity for school expansion in the future, engage with local schools committees, communities prior to redesigning, repurposing, or closing any schools, and consider the need for family literacy and early childhood learning centers and the suggested alternative uses in any redesigned plan. Okay, having said that, there's some changes to the agenda. CM-1, Exhibit 1 was revised to update the correct parade route. That's important. CM-8, the CAM, Exhibits 2 and 3 were revised. Exhibit 2A was removed. CR-5, the CAM and Exhibits 1 and 2 were revised. And M-6, the agenda item is in both Districts 2 and 4. All right. Having said all that, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda as amended?
Which one is in 2 and 4? M what?
M-6.
They left out District 2.
I think M-6 is all in District 2. We went through.
You have a, you have a little sliver.
I thought so.
Between 17th and Coley Hammock, you have a little sliver.
Okay, we'll take it.
Your call.
Okay. All right. So will someone move to approve the minutes and the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman. Commissioner Sturman.
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and the agenda and the minutes as amended have now been approved. So now we move into our presentation section of the tonight's meeting. Our first presentation, I'd like to invite Vice Mayor Glassman to present a proclamation declaring October 10, 2024, as Sun Princess Day in the City of Fort Lauderdale. And I'd like to invite the Princess Cruises President, John Paget, and Senior Vice President of Communications, Vicky Johnson. Are you here tonight? Come on, step forward. Thank you for being here. We welcome you. Another Princess Cruise, yes.
It's a love boat. Thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to present this proclamation from the Office of the Mayor, City of Fort Lauderdale, in recognition of Sun Princess Day. Whereas, the cruise industry is indispensable to the economy of Fort Lauderdale, contributing to the economic vitality of the region. In fiscal year 2023, Port Everglades generated $26.5 billion in economic activity, $925 million in state and local taxes, and supported 10,778 jobs, with projections for 2024 showing 35 million cruise passengers worldwide and revenue exceeding $30 billion. And whereas, Sun Princess, the most impressive and luxurious vessel ever created by Princess Cruises, is a true engineering marvel, offering travelers extraordinary experiences and visiting premier ports around the globe. And whereas, Princess Cruises headquartered in Fort Lauderdale has chosen Port Everglades as the U.S. home port for Sun Princess, signaling a new era of innovation and excellence in the cruise industry. And whereas, Sun Princess is the first LNG-powered ship in the Princess fleet and integrates the latest technologies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, minimizing environmental impact, and embodying a commitment to protecting and preserving the world's precious resources. And whereas, Sun Princess will be one of six Princess ships sailing from Port Everglades during the 2024-2025 Caribbean season, further solidifying Fort Lauderdale as a premier destination for cruise travelers seeking world-class experiences. And whereas, Sun Princess boasts groundbreaking architectural elements such as the dome, a geodesic glass-enclosed structure providing climate-controlled comfort with a South Beach-inspired atmosphere, and the technologically advanced arena, the most sophisticated theater at sea. And whereas, the arrival of Sun Princess in Fort Lauderdale marks a significant milestone in the enduring partnership between Princess Cruises and the City of Fort Lauderdale, contributing to the city's economic growth and enhancing its global reputation as a leading maritime travel hub. And whereas, Vice Mayor Steve Glassman has requested this recognition to celebrate the significance of Sun Princess to the city and its residents, now therefore, we, as City Commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 10, 2024, as Sun Princess Day in the City of Fort Lauderdale, and dated this the first day of October 2024, and signed by the Mayor, the Honorable Dean J. Trentalis. Thank you. John, would you like to say a few words about the experience?
Sure. Thank you. So, in fact, the Sun Princess is the most luxurious, most impressive, and stunning love boat ever created. And in fact, today, Conde Nast Travel announced it and awarded it as the number-one mega-ship in the world, beating all of the sisters down south. So the number-one ship in the world will be homeported at Fort Lauderdale in Terminal 2 at Port Everglades. And from being a Fort Lauderdale resident, I couldn't be more proud that the Sun Princess, in combination with the convention center expansion, the incredible Omni, the waterfront park, the incredible lighting on the bridge, and Pier 66, I travel all over the world every single week. I've gone to over 330 destinations supporting Princess. And to me, as a resident, that is one of the most impressive waterside-welcoming collection of assets in the world, and I'm proud to be a resident and proud to support Sun Princess coming to Fort Lauderdale. In fact, it left Europe a few hours ago, and it's on its way to Fort Lauderdale right now. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
I think the Vice Mayor is already packing his bags, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
The Vice Mayor has single-handedly kept the cruise industry alive these last several years.
Thank you.
How many passengers does the Sun Princess accommodate? 4,000? Big ship. Okay, now, our second presentation is my honor to present a proclamation declaring October 6 through 12 as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Fort Lauderdale. And I'd like to invite our Fire Marshal, Jeff Lucas, to the podium, and our chief, and anybody else who wants to come. He took me seriously. He took me seriously. Okay, from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Fort Lauderdale, this proclamation in recognition of Fire Prevention Week. Whereas, the City of Fort Lauderdale is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. Fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. In 2022, home fires tragically claimed the lives of over 2,700 individuals in the United States, as reported by the National Fire Prevention Association. Roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. The lifesaving potential of working smoke alarms cannot be overstated, cutting the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. Smoke alarms send smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. Fort Lauderdale residents are encouraged to install smoke alarms in every bedroom outside of each separate sleeping area and on every level of your home. Residents are encouraged to test smoke alarms at least once a month. Residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore are more likely to survive a fire. Fort Lauderdale first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Finally, the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Smoke Alarms: Make Them Work For You," serves to remind us of the importance of having smoke alarms in the home. We, therefore, as the City Commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of October 6 through 12, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week, signed by myself, Mayor Dean Trentalis. Congratulations. You want to say a few words?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. Just so you know, this is the 99th year since it was proclaimed by President Coolidge in 1925 that this proclamation is made for Fire Prevention Week. Next year will be the 100th anniversary. We'll see what special thing I can bring to you then for that. But just wanted to give you quick three words of wisdom to take home with you today, and it's install, test, and replace. So if you don't have smoke alarms, you need to install them inside every bedroom and outside every bedroom, usually in a hallway. Test them. You can test them monthly, but since we do have our time change coming up in November 3rd, you can test them biannually if you want to. So that's always, at least you're testing them. And then replace. Most smoke alarms are only good for 10 years, so if your smoke alarms are older than 10 years, you should probably replace them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, and the third and most important presentation tonight is where we recognize one of our city employees. All of you know him. He's probably the most liked city employee other than the members of the commission. And his name is George Hushka. George, where are you? Let's, come on, let's hear a round of applause for George. Let's hear, come on, let's hear a round of applause for George. Our chief, Steve Golen, will be making the presentation.
So, good evening, everyone. Unfortunately, I don't have any whereas or hereas, so it's gonna be a little different of a presentation.
No as.
Yes, yes. And not Old English. So, on a normal daily basis, we see all the great things that our employees do. You know, often, we think of police and firefighters as heroic, or in a heroic nature, and that's the job that we're trained to do. Every now and then, we have an individual that has some of the training but doesn't do those jobs, isn't even in his job description to do. And when that moment of emergency arises, knows exactly what to do, rises to the occasion, runs over and takes care of it, and saves a life. And that's exactly what George did. This past June, George, whom works for Neighbor Support with Luisa, who's being humble over there hiding in the corner, come up here with us. George was doing his daily workload, and a lot of times, George is out interacting with our Neighbor Support team, putting books. He makes these amazing libraries that are shared libraries throughout the community that I'm sure you've seen. But he's not normally called on to save a life. On this particular day in June, George was doing his daily routine when he saw an individual in a car that was having an unfortunate situation and overdosing on what was believed to be an opiate. George's training kicked in, his CERT training that he had been through, and he was able to acquire Narcan and get over and administer Narcan. That act alone saved that young man's life and allows him to be here today. So, it's kind of full circle, because if you remember last commission meeting, I was here, and I was bringing forth us receiving Narcan from the state of Florida and being able to distribute that Narcan out. This year is exactly why we need that Narcan on the streets. Not only in this situation, but also during spring break, we were able to distribute Narcan to all of the hotels in Fort Lauderdale, resulting in zero overdoses, deaths from overdoses during the spring break this year. So, there's no doubt that Narcan saves lives. The training, CPR training, how to administer the Narcan, and the CERT training that George has saves lives. George, on behalf of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Fort Lauderdale Fire Department, I can't thank you enough for going above and beyond that day and for acting, to doing what some people may be scared to do, but for all of your training coming together and for being a true hero.
Thank you. And also, we have four. Well, thank you very much, Chief Golen, Commissioner, and Mayor. I greatly appreciate it. He said so much already around the whole issue about having Narcan in the car. I have to say thank you, because I was able to take the CERT training 10 years ago. Also, I have to say that I'm working with a fellowship recovery over the last year on coffee younger conversations, and part of what we're doing is connecting homeless people to services, but we're also having Narcan available all the time. And the fellowship always recommends have a Narcan dose in your car. I did, and when I saw the guy release spasms in the car, I just had to run, get the Narcan, and came back. Okay, three minutes later, I came to. So, it's like, thank God, okay, we had the training. Thank the city for making that available. Thank you, fellowship, okay? Please, everyone have Narcan in your car. I never thought I was going to use it. Took two months for me to use it. So, thank you very much for the honor. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, George. Okay, so let us now move on to the regular agenda. Now, the agenda has a number of items at the beginning, which are called Consent Agenda Items. These items are normally voted upon one time by the city commission, and unless a member of the commission pulls the item, and we will discuss it separately and vote on it separately. If you came here tonight to vote, excuse me, if you came here tonight to speak on one of the Consent Agenda Items, and it has not been pulled, I will invite you to speak after we have voted on all the Consent Agenda Items, and we'll pull that item and allow you to speak at that time. So, let us begin. Commissioner Herbst, are there any Consent Agenda Items that you'd like to pull? Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
None.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. CM 12 and CM 15.
Commissioner Sturman?
I have a few, but let me start with CM 12. He's already mentioned. I got CM 12, CR 1, CR 4. And before I go on, I have a question for this city attorney and/or the city clerk. There's two items that were revised here, CR 5 and CR 8. They were noticed, but now they're amended. I don't know if the public has the revisions. Do they have to be pulled because they weren't noticed, or how does that work? Do we have to discuss them, or we could keep them at consent?
I think we can discuss them when you pull them off to discuss.
No, no, I don't necessarily need to pull them, but do we need to pull them if they've been revised and they haven't been noticed?
I don't remember what the revisions are. Do you remember, David?
Yeah, and CR 5, and the same was with the one on the two companion items. It was changing the boundary for Riverwalk, and I think there was a reduction in the amount of 25,000.
Okay, so the only thing, I might or might not, CR 5, one quick question. The boundary, I know I'm not actually pulling it, but before I decide whether or not to pull, the boundary just went back to the original boundary, is that what it was?
That is correct.
Okay, so there's no reason for me to pull that unless it's required. I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna leave those two, I'm gonna leave those two items as is.
So, the items that have been pulled are CM 12, CM 15, CR 1, and CR 4. Is that correct? Did I cover all of yours?
12, CR 1, CR 4, and Steve, you had another.
Just yours, Commissioner Sturman. Which are yours?
He's got my two.
Mine is 12, which is Steve's also 1 and 4.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay. So, there are members of the public who've signed up to speak on the other ones that were not pulled. Those will be approved in one consent vote, so unless you have something specifically you need to get off your chest, you're welcome to come visit and to the podium and speak. Otherwise, it will be voted on and approved tonight, all right? Now, with regard to CR 3 and CP 1, those will all, those, again, Heidi, where are you, Heidi? Okay, just for questions, right? Okay. So, except for CM 12, CM 15, CR 1, and CR 4, do I hear a motion to approve those items?
Some move.
Some move.
The move is seconded. So, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and so all those Consent Agenda Items except CM 12, 15, CR 1, and CR 4 have now been approved. So, let us move on. So, Commissioner, I mean Vice Mayor, CM 12.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, I pulled this for two reasons. Number one, this is a wonderful opportunity for our city to receive over $11 million for 28 firefighters. This will go a long way. That means in the last few years, we've actually added almost 60 positions to fire rescue, which is really incredible. But I also want us to just keep in mind, and I think the public needs to know as well, and I'm gonna ask maybe Laura if she could just verify all of this. This is a grant from FEMA for three years. It's a grant for $11,386,788 for those 28 firefighter positions. We have a match of about $584,000. But what I think everyone just needs to know as we start to head into next year's budget cycle, is that after three years of this funding for these 28 firefighters, the city is responsible for continuing that funding, or else the federal government is able to claw back that over $11 million. So, I just want to make sure that we understand that, I guess, what we're looking at in year four, after the grant expires, is we will have to fund an additional $6.2 million a year, and that will be a budget consideration for us to think of, correct?
Yes, we have the annual amounts. Did you want to know the projected annual amounts? Okay. So, for year one, it's a partial year because it's as of March this year, $584,000. In year two, next year, is 1.2 million in general funds. Year three, 1.3 million. In year four, 6.2 million. And then, the year after that, 6.7 million.
So, year five would be 6.7?
Yes, and that's escalated with the pension costs and the full cost of the lieutenants.
Okay. So, I just, you know, as we've been having our discussions over the last few months, everyone has these wish lists, everyone's concerned about the milage rate, everyone's concerned about what we need to fund going forward as a city. But I just want us to all be cognizant of this, and the public needs to know that even though, well, I'm gonna be very supportive of this because I think it's great for three years to have this grant and fund the 28 extra positions, but we are responsible, when this grant expires, for keeping that going, and that's an additional 6.2 million.
Well, Vice Mayor, you also know that we can apply again for the grant. It's not like we can never apply for a grant.
I don't think for the same positions. It has to be ten hands positions.
I'm sorry?
My understanding of the grant is similar to the cops grant, is to add new positions. It's encouraging municipalities to add positions so they wouldn't fund positions you already have.
I see.
And we have to be another additional 28.
We'll just think of all that loose change we're gonna have when we start that new taxing district.
Well, whatever. Again, again, I just want to make sure that we're all aware, as a commission and the public's aware, that nothing comes without some strings attached, and this is just a major consideration that we'll have going forward, that's all. I'm supportive, but I just wanted to get that on the record.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Do you want to move the item?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
The move is seconded. Please call the roll.
I pulled it too, remember?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just Steve, if you can, Captain, Chief Golen. And people that were here in the afternoon heard this, but for the people who weren't for the evening, just to, I mean, this is monumental. We're, if you want to expand on this, but we're going from two to three people per EMS. You went through how many stations, how many EMS we have, how many we have so far, and how many are gonna convert over, just to, just go over what we said this afternoon.
So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Fire Chief Stephen Golen. First and foremost, I want to thank you for your support, not just on this, but your daily support that you provide. This particular grant is for 28 individuals that will be on rescues throughout the city. This will take six of our rescues to full-time staffing on three. So, what exactly does that mean to the community? What we see is the difference on return of spontaneous circulation or survivability in a cardiac arrest goes up by 17% in the city of Fort Lauderdale when the first arriving truck has three people on it. The reason for that is because they're able to immediately apply CPR, they're able to immediately get the reversing medications on, just like Narcan. And so, when you start to put a value on a life and you're looking at 17%, that's a huge number. So, we're very, very thankful for the federal government, for the safer grant, and for the ability to, what we were already working on, but this will propel it by almost three to four years forward. What we had was about one to two rescues a year, we're advancing, and the national standard right now is three people on a rescue truck or on an ambulance. And so, this is helping us get to that new level.
So, this was a priority that we had when we did our goal-setting, in fact, in the beginning of the year. So, you understand what Chief Golen says, it's a standard in the community to have three people per each EMS truck, okay? And you need one to drive and two in the back, one to do CPR, to log, or to record, whatever you need to do. So, what we would do, and you could back me with this, is you'd have a medical call, you'd send an EMS truck to get that third person, you'd have to send a whole nother truck with their crew. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so you'd be taking two sets of equipment and two sets of teams out of service, and something else happens there, they're exposed. Getting this third person on every EMS truck is much more efficient, it saves lives. We were going one to two per year. We're jumping up to six new ones, and this is a huge thing for the city. Thank you for your support of this, Chief Golen. I can't thank you for what you do for the city every day. You're thanking us. Thank you very much. Great thing. Okay, and I think it's been moved and seconded, so...
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further comment on this item?
No, I'm ready to roll.
Okay, there being none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Let's move on to CM 15, Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, like the other item I pulled, I want to say that I am in support of this. This is a wonderful addition. It'll be great on the garage right opposite the library. But I bring this to the attention of staff because I want us to be able to work on the, I want us to work on the Public Art Ordinance, and I want us to be able to work on the Public Art Advisory Board. I'm just hearing things that I think need to be straightened out. There have been some resignations on that board. I think the ordinance really needs tweaking, and as someone who advocated for the Public Art Advisory Board, and also advocated for actually the Office of Cultural Affairs Officer, and also for the Public Art Ordinance, I just feel that we need to do more work. And I'm just imploring staff to do that work, because there is just a lot flying around there, and I just think that we need to get a better grip on it. I just, I feel that we just need to do some work.
What does that mean, do some work? Have you met with the advisory board yourself?
Well, I've spoken to individuals on the advisory board. I've also heard from people that have resigned from the advisory board, including some of my appointees. And I don't want to get into it now, but I just think that there are issues. I think people are aware of it. I just don't want to see it slide. I want to see it addressed. I want to see the Public Art Board and also the ordinance itself be as successful as it possibly can, whether that even means using the 2% contribution that we require for public projects to apply to private development, if we can look into that like some other municipalities have, that's a consideration. And then, just really, how this board gets functioned, how Josh's office gets financed, everything. I just want to take a look at everything that's coming under Josh's purview. He's doing a great job, but I want to make sure that he has the freedom and the ability and the financial wherewithal to make sure that this is as successful as it can be.
So, in what form or context do you want to examine that? You want to have a special, like, conference item?
No, not even necessary. I just, I think that hopefully, when staff comes together and does what they have to do, they'll report back to us with ways, with city attorney's office, of ways that we can tweak the ordinance, and that'll eventually come back to us. And then, I just think that, you know, we'll hit the ground running with the tweaks to the ordinance and everything under Josh's purview, and I think we'll be okay. But I just wanted to bring it to our attention, because I'm hearing it more and more, and I just think that we need to address it.
Okay, would you like to move CM 15?
Yes, happy to.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
The move is seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and CM 15 is now approved. Commissioner Sturman, CR 1.
This is a very simple thing. Susan, the title is very misleading, and that's the only reason why I'm pulling this. Railroad Crossing Elimination Program, and that's really not what this is about. This is pedestrian crossing. I mean, just to explain a little bit better.
Can I ask Milos to come up?
Yes, if you can, thank you.
Good evening, Milos Myshtory. He's acting director for Cities Transportation and Mobility Department. So, this was a grant under the program Railroad Crossing Elimination Program, but really is to conduct a planning study that would help us better understand interaction between vehicular and railroad traffic at about 15 crossings, railroad crossings throughout the city, so that we can inform some future decisions in terms of grade separation.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for clarifying that. Mr. Mayor, with that being said, I go ahead and move the item.
Okay, the item has been moved. It's, excuse me, the resolution has been introduced.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Okay, and if you could please call the roll.
A resolution is city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the agreement acceptance of the grant funds from the United States Department of Transportation Federal Railroad Administration for the Railroad Crossing Elimination Grant Program in the amount of $280,000. Delegating authority to the city manager to establish an electronic grant solutions account to accept and execute the grant agreement and any, all documents necessary or incidental to acceptance of such grant funding on behalf of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Delegating authority to the city manager or the city manager is designated to submit quarterly project progress reports and recertifications to the Federal Railroad Administration on behalf of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. You know, I don't know, you can spend endless amounts of money on these things, and it's all about common sense. When the gates go down, you don't cross the tracks. I mean, I don't know, I, I don't know how else you can translate that into, into your planning, but anyway.
Called the Darwin Effect.
Yeah. That was cruel. Okay, Commissioner, CR four.
Okay, there's only one item on here, and it's really just for a shout-out at how thrilled I am. It's, I guess, item F. It's, it's related to, who could speak upon that?
Item F?
There's a CR four.
As in Frank?
Yes. We are so excited about this. This is, we got that one million dollars back into Riverland Road.
Yes.
And it's for, I guess, it's for intersection raises and also a couple other things. I think they're doing two raised crossings as well as a median and things. If you just want to go what that's going for.
Absolutely. Milos, again, with the Cities Transportation Mobility Department. So this would enable us to implement traffic calming along Riverland, and that would be between State Road Seven and Davie Boulevard. And scope of work contains raising about five intersections, and that would be on Southwest Thirty-Fifth Avenue, Riverland Terrace, Twenty-seventh Avenue, Twenty-first, and Nineteenth Street, two raised crosswalks, and also some median refuge island to improve pedestrian safety.
Cool. I want to thank you and city manager for, for putting that back in. This is, I mean, that is a critical raceway through that neighborhood. They desperately needed that, and I know it was going to be a year or two, but getting it into this year's budget, I thank you very much. And with that, I will introduce the resolution.
Okay, there's Blaze McGinley, is he here? Blaze, would you like to come up and speak?
Thank you, the resolution's been introduced.
For approval, correct?
For approval, yes. Hello, Blaze.
Hi.
Appreciate the bottom of the speaker.
Hi, my name is Blaze McGinley, fifteen hundred Argyle Drive, Fort Lauderdale. I just wanted to make sure that we expressed myself and the Broward Trust for Historic Preservation and the historic community at large. We're, we're very excited about the resolution approving the consolidated budget amendment, especially for the anti-backhouse. We really do appreciate your support.
What does it cost two hundred thousand dollars to build? I could build that.
It's in quite a state of disrepair.
Okay. How many square feet is it? Nine hundred, eight hundred?
Nine hundred.
Yeah.
Um, we, uh.
Cut it out.
Yeah, it's not, it's not only the house, but it's the hardscape around it. What it really does is it provides accessibility, and it also addresses some of the deferred maintenance that, that hasn't been done in a while. We were able to put together a list of action items, we put together preliminary budget, so we're very excited about moving forward.
Do we have, we still have a police officer living in there?
Yes.
We do, okay.
They rotate.
They rotate.
At different, officers at different times.
Okay. All right, very good, thank you. Would someone like to introduce the resolutions? Did you introduce it? Okay, I'm sorry. Please call the roll. Anyone else wish to speak on this? No one. Okay, please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale's fiscal year 2025 final all funds budget and final personnel complement for the fiscal year beginning October one, 2024, and ending September thirtieth, 2025 by appropriating and transferring funds and adding personnel respectively as set forth in City Commission Agenda Memo twenty-four dash zero eight four zero, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale final fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2029 community investment plan for the fiscal years beginning October one, 2024, and ending September thirtieth, 2029 by appropriating and transferring funds as set forth in the Commission Agenda Memo twenty-four dash zero eight four zero, abandoning the Southwest Fourth Avenue Nugent Avenue Title Waves Replacement Project and the Nugent Avenue Andrews Avenue Title Wave Replacement Project and providing for survivability and an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes. And all the consent agenda items are now approved, so we're going to move on to the motions. This is M one. This is a motion approving the First Amendment to the Comprehensive Agreement for the Prospect Lake Clean Water Center, Prospect Lake Water LP. Anyone have any questions? No one has signed up to speak. Someone like to move the item?
It's all moved.
It's been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
It moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and M one is now approved. Moving on to M two, motion approving the change order number four for the Prospect Lake Clean Water Center, Prospect Lake LP. No one has signed up to speak. Someone like to move the item?
It's all moved.
It's been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and M two is now approved. M three, excuse me, this is a motion approving a change order number five for an optimal corrosion control treatment pipe loop test for the Prospect Lake Clean Water Center. No one has signed up to speak. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance? The ordinance has been introduced.
It's a motion.
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. So Commissioner Herbst says move the item, do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and M three is now approved. M four, a motion approving a change order for PFAS Pilot Testing for the Prospect Lake Clean Water Center. No one has signed up to speak. Someone like to move the item?
It's all moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
It been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and, and that item is now approved. M five, motion approving of proprietary purchases for water distribution, wastewater collection, stormwater system infrastructures, and treatment facilities. No one has signed up to speak. Someone like to move the item?
It's all moved.
Second.
Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and M five is now approved. M six, you just got out of the wire. M six, motion approving agreement for the Design Consulting Service for the La Solas Corridor Mobility Project, Kimley Horn Associates. Mr. Mario, don't ask me to pronounce your last name. Mon, Mon, Ian, Mon, Mario, you here?
Yes, he is. Moenafar.
How we pronounce it?
Moenafar.
Moenafar.
Come on.
Yeah, please come up here. Well, excuse me.
Well, you should know your city.
Yes, thank you. You're here on behalf of the association?
Yes.
Please, please push the button at the bottom. At the bottom of the speaker.
President of the La Solas Isles.
Yeah, I know he's the president, I just don't know how to pronounce it.
All right, perfect. Yeah, so, good evening, Mario Moenafar is my name. I'm the president of the La Solas Homeowners Association. And I just wanted to come here and support the project, the mobility project. I represent about three hundred, just over three hundred homes, and I design and build homes in the area, and I also live in the area. And, you know, I walk and ride my bike and things like that, so I happen to know a lot of the neighbors, and everybody that I have spoken to supports the project and wants it to happen, and I think it'll be amazing. And it was approved before, so I don't really understand what happened. But, yeah, that's pretty much it. I think it's, it's a great addition to La Solas, you know, it's, just beautifies the place, and everybody that I have spoken to absolutely loves it and wants it to happen.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a question to ask on this. First of all, does anyone else have any questions? Okay.
I do when you're done, Mayor.
Okay. So we've assigned the, we've assigned the Western portion to two consultants. But last, when we, when, you know, when we last discussed this, I believe there was like Plan A and Plan B. Is that, is that what we're doing again?
Milos is coming up, but yes.
Milos Mijstorovic, again, Cities Transportation Mobility Department. So a couple of months ago, back in May, we awarded the Western corridor design to WSP. And WSP is the company who is now, who started working on the project, and ultimately they will deliver sixty percent plans as, as an outcome, right? So tonight, before you, is an award of a contract for the Eastern corridor between Southeast Seventeenth Avenue to A1A to Kimley Horn and Associates. So to do the similar thing, to basically develop vision into sixty percent design plans.
Yeah, but Mayor, I think you might be referring to that we were going to have the Eastern corridor.
For the shops, correct.
Done with two different options.
Correct.
That is correct. So that, you're referring to the shops segment, which is a part.
That's the Western portion, right?
That is right.
Yeah. So the Western portion is going, so each, each, so each consultant is going to take on one, one plan, so one will do Plan A and one will do Plan B?
Well, the one consultant is doing the Western portion, and they're giving us two options that we're going to bring back before they take it to a hundred percent design. The second consultant is doing the Eastern portion.
Yeah, this is just the Eastern portion, Dean.
So this is just the Eastern portion.
That's correct. And if I, if I might clarify just that for you, Mr. Mayor. So the Western portion is the retail shops, which is the one that will develop two options. The first one will basically be similar to what was identified as part of the Coradino Group plan, and the second one will be created also pursuant to direction from the City Commission that would retain median, modify parking lane, and expand the sidewalk widths. So once we have those two, particularly for shops, we'll bring back, bring it back to you so you can decide which one of two do we.
And who's doing that?
That is WSP.
WSP is doing the.
The Western, including shops.
Okay. It was just a little, I, it was just a little confusing in the backup, but I understand it now. Okay, Commissioner Herbst?
Thank you, Mayor. So what concerns me about this is that there's no construction funding in place to advance this project from design to construction. And I remember when we've had these lengthy presentations on the overall design, I know there was a lot of pushback from the neighborhoods that they had no intention of paying for it. So I understand when we approve the design for the shops area because the landowners in that area had agreed to participate in the cost of actual construction. So there's a possibility of actually getting that one built. This reminds me, and Mayor, you were around long enough to remember this, of the Seventh, Ninth Connector over in District Three, where we spent millions of dollars over years studying a road that was going to cost in excess of a hundred million dollars and would never get built because we had never identified a source of funds to do it. So it, it concerns me when we spend lots of money on design projects when there's never any funding for actual construction. We did the same thing, too, at the beach. You remember that? We had some funding from the federal government. We were looking to four-lane A1A down in the southern portion, and we held on to that money for years, did studies, and we never built that because we never had the hundreds of millions of dollars necessary to do the right-of-way acquisition. So there's at least two other projects I can think of since I've been here where we've just spent a lot of money on design and never had funding for the actual construction. And if I remember correctly, the total cost of La Solas Mobility was going to be one hundred and fifty-one million dollars or something in that. I mean, we simply don't have the money to build these things. Why, why are we spending millions of dollars to study something that'll never get built?
Mayor, if I could respond to that from my district?
Sure.
Thank you. Great question. We also don't have the money identified for the Western portion, but we're moving forward with that design phase anyway, even though we don't have a dollar amount, even though we don't have the funding identified at this time. But that's moving forward. The reason they're moving forward is that we spent over two years meeting with stakeholders from Andrews Avenue to the beach. This was all done in full transparency. It was done with tons of neighborhood input, like Mario had mentioned. It was done to, to better La Solas for all forms of mobility. So my portion of the district, which is in front of us tonight, except for a small sliver for Commissioner Sturman, they want this to happen. You can't go for funding, you cannot apply for funding if you don't have a design. It's as simple as that. You have to start somewhere. You have to start with the design, and then you put that together, and then you make sure that that moves forward. And when you have that in hand, you're then able to go. These dollars for this item have been included in the budget for this very reason. It would be a shame that all of these residents from Coley Hammock to the beach that worked for two years to come up with a conceptual plan, we hired Coradino. Again, I, I don't even remember the number of meetings, I don't know if Milos even have that record or Ben, but it was at least twenty-five, thirty meetings over two years. So this was not just a shot in the dark. This was a tremendous neighborhood input-driven project where many people came together, came to consensus, and the City Commission, in concept, approved the entire project, both east and west. So that's all on the record. This is just that next logical step, just like it was the next logical step to move forward with the Western portion. It, it would make absolutely no sense to just cut it off there and then not grant the Eastern portion of design to the residents who worked so hard to improve their section of La Solas Boulevard.
All right, so, you know, to, to Commissioner Herbst's point, it's true that when that idea of Seventh Avenue and Ninth Avenue Connector was first conceived, by the time we got around with design and so forth, it became astronomical in cost. And I, I do recall, though, that the reason why the, the price shot up so high was because of land acquisition. The value of those properties along that corridor that had, would have had to have been taken by eminent domain, shot up so high that it just made the entire project impossible. And I think the same was true with this, with the Seabreeze project, trying to expand that roadway. It was mainly because of the cost of land acquisition. I don't think there's any land acquisition involved in this, right?
No, and actually, this is a much simplified plan compared to the Western portion of La Solas, which is going to be a lot more detailed and a lot more expensive. The residents on the Eastern portion, from Seventeenth Street to the beach, scaled Coradino's plans way back. This is not a complicated plan, but they did scale it way back. A lot of the really grandiose ideas like, like overhead transportation over La Solas, a total change of the medians where the Royal Palms are, all of that was just thrown out. There, there were large areas along the intercoastal, I'm sorry, along La Solas Boulevard overlooking the water that were almost like little parklets. All of that was eliminated. This is a very simplified.
Right, but it's still a costly project. But I, but, but again, the other thing, the, the chances of it going up astronomically like the other projects is probably less because we're not talking about land acquisition.
We're not talking about that. And, and again, it's a much simpler, much simpler plan than the Western portion of La Solas. Again, it, it's almost really like just a beautification project, and then also taking a look at some of the traffic lanes. I will tell you that there was one component that people wanted, and I was able to get that in the budget for this past year, and we did move forward it. We actually installed two crosswalks there because people were concerned with the danger on La Solas Boulevard for pedestrians trying to cross from north to south. We were able to get that into the budget for the last fiscal year, and those crosswalks are actually there now, installed, used. But again, this, this is not as complicated as the Western portion, but we do owe it to all of those neighborhoods from Seventeenth all the way to the beach to just carry on with what they wanted and what they put in in terms of time and energy to just finish this plan. Again, this is just to wrap up the rest of the project.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, this is M six. Has a motion been made to approve? No. Would someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Commissioner Sturman?
I'll second.
Second. Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded. If there's, and no one else has signed up to speak, so please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and M six is now approved. M seven, M seven, the motion approving an agreement for the Runway nine dash twenty-seven pavement rehabilitation project, General Asphalt Company. No one has signed up to speak. Would someone like to move the item? Would someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and M7 is now approved. M8, this is a motion approving a consent to assignment of agreement for Investment Management Services, PFM Asset Management, to U.S. Bancorp Asset Management. No one has signed up to speak. Someone, someone move the item?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and M8 is now approved. M9, this is a motion for discussion regarding City Commission request for review regarding 900 Intercoastal Drive. I asked the City Manager to put this on the agenda tonight, so, but we need to have, there are several people who've signed up to speak. But before we get to those individuals, Mr. Ansro or Mr. Spence, is Mr. Spence still here? I think he stepped out, okay. Mr. Ansro, please tell us a little bit how we, what, oh, how are you, all right, there he is. Dwayne, we're on M9, and so, explain to the community and to the commission kind of what the process is. And so when an applicant for a building applies with the city, tell us a little bit of how that proceeds through the city process and, and what are our options through that process?
Sure. Dwayne Spence, Deputy City Attorney. So, the City of Fort Lauderdale's ULDR has a tiered system with regards to approvals. We have three levels, four levels of site plan approvals. And there is a system that has been implemented that's called the Commission Request for Review that certain site plan levels that are approved, there is an option for members of the City Commission to call up an item within 30 days of that approval. In 2019.
Approved by whom?
Approved by whichever tier is subject to approval. In this particular case, it's the Planning and Zoning Board.
Okay, so 30 days from approval of this Planning and Zoning Board.
That's correct.
How about if the Planning and Zoning Board did not approve it? Do they, does it ever get to the commission through a call-up process?
Then it would not have been a site plan level three review. It, it depends on the level of review.
I'm saying if they denied it.
Correct, if they denied it, it does not.
It doesn't reach the City Commission?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. In 2019, the state legislature amended Section 166.033 of the Florida statutes to provide for, providing deadlines for final action on development permits and development orders. So, development permits that go through the regular city process have 120 day, the municipality has 120 days in which to do a final action, which means approve, deny, or approve with conditions. And in a quasi-judicial matter, they have 180 days in which to make a final decision on those matters. And so, when that was passed, most of the development community understood our process, and we treated the, the, the Commission Request for Review process as an additional process in, in, in that process. We were challenged when a project known as 500 Hendrix came before the Commission. And when that project came before the Commission, the applicant provided an extension because the statute allows us to agree with the other party to provide a reasonable extension of time. They provided a reasonable extension of time to allow the Commission to consider the request for review, but did not provide a reasonable amount of time for the Commission to actually set a de novo hearing. So, what happened with that case is the Commission called it up within the timeframe provided, but they set the de novo hearing outside of that timeframe and actually held the de novo hearing, denied the project. And that was challenged in Circuit Court. And we had, in that case, there was two challenges. They sought a writ of mandamus to compel the city to issue the development permit, and they also challenged us in a writ of certiorari. The writ of certiorari was heard by a three-judge panel, and they were successful in that writ. And the three-judge panel found that the city did not follow the essential requirements of law by violating the statute. We challenged that up to the Fourth DCA, the second-tier certiorari. We, the city petitioned, and it was denied. The Fourth DCA did not hear that petition. The lower court judge also issued a man, a writ of mandamus, forcing the city to issue the development permit. We also were appealing that, but when the, they denied our writ of certiorari on the writ of certiorari that was granted, we voluntarily withdrew that. So, the posture that, that has us in, although those decisions are not presidential for the city, it did cost the city upwards of $62,000 to defend that action. And so, our office has advised the Commission and staff as we move forward that when we have these items, we need to do our best effort to attempt to get an extension of time from the developers, understanding, because, you know, most developers and their counsel understand our process and what's built into our code. Ask for sufficient time in which to go completely through the city's process. That has not always occurred. In this particular case, it does not, there seems to be a misunderstanding in communication between staff and counsel and that the extension was only granted to September 27th. We initially informed, well, staff informed the Commission of the ability to call this item up. And when the agenda was published, another date was put in the, the agenda, which was the October 18th date. That was, that was an error in the publication. The, as the applicant's representative noted upon the publication, that, that was an error and that they did not agree to that extension. So the posture that we're in currently is an attempt to both comply with state statute and to comply with our code. So, in order to comply with our code, we can have this process of hearing the discussion and considering the motion. However, if you proceed to a de novo hearing, if we are challenged on that, depending upon how that goes, the likelihood of us being successful in Circuit Court is probably low based on how that three-judge panel previously ruled on a similar matter.
Okay, so, let's, let's go back a little bit.
Sure.
We've heard the process. So, when the applicant applied with our city staff for a building permit.
A development permit.
Excuse me, a development permit. When was it deemed complete? When was the application deemed complete? Was it January 30th, was it?
The application was received on January 30th.
Received on January 30th.
Complete on February 2nd.
So it was deemed complete on February 2nd of 2024?
Correct.
And so, consider, it was a, it was, this is considered a quasi-judicial process, and it, we, we were given a hu, we were given 180 days to act on it for final, for final decision, right?
Correct, so ba- based on that submission, the 180 days date would be July 28th, 2024.
Okay, so July 28th of 2024, the Planning and Zoning Board had not heard it by then, correct?
That's correct.
So, would it have, so if there were no extensions, then whatever the applicant had applied for, the, the original building design, whatever the applicant had, had applied for, that would have been the one that has to be approved because the state statute requires it one way or the other by 180 days, correct?
So the pro, the process that we've advised staff to do is if we cannot get the application to any of our approving bodies within the statutory timeframe, is to advise them that the application is denied.
It's denied if we can't get it through the approving bodies?
Correct, because they've already deemed the application to be complete.
Right, so, so by, by July, the application had not been reviewed by the approving bodies, right?
That's correct.
So, so had there not been an extension, it would have been denied?
Correct.
Okay, so, at some point, the city, someone in the city staff and the applicant agreed to an extension of time, correct?
So there's correspondence from city staff requesting an extension that would provide sufficient time for the application to be heard before the City Commission. There was a reply email that provided for a different date, a 60-day period from, leave a 60, so staff requested a 30-day period from September 18th, and the reply was for
October.
A 60-day period from July 24th. There wasn't any confirmation in the emails. However, the staff report for the Planning and Zoning Board meeting does state September 27th as the date that the extension was granted to.
So, did the, did the request for the extension originate from city staff or from the applicant?
The, the email that I have is from city staff to the applicant.
So the applicant didn't ask for an extension?
The applicant replied to city staff, correct?
But they didn't initiate the process? I'm, I'm just learning this now for the first time.
I can't, I can't speak to any other correspondence. What, what I've been able to obtain is a, is the first correspondence from city staff to the applicant.
Do you have the email in front of you of when the applicant responded?
So, the email from staff was July 29th, 2024 at 12:57 PM. And the reply from the applicant's representative was July 29th, 2024 at 1:18 PM.
And when was the 180 days expired?
July 28th, however, that, that's a Sunday. And I guess the legal authority kind of provides that when a termination of a statutory time period ends on a Sunday, that you have that Monday to comply.
Okay, so they, they responded on July 29th?
That's correct.
Okay, before the end of the day?
Correct.
Okay, so, and did the city staff agree, they, what was the first date that the city staff asked for?
It was 30 days from September 18th.
30 days from September 18th, which would have brought it to October 18th, right? And, and the applicant said, no, we want it September 27th, correct?
The applicant replied, I thought I emailed you Friday asking for, well, I thought I emailed you on Friday asking for 60 days from July 24th.
Okay, so, that would bring us to, so there was no meeting of the minds on July 29th? We had not come to any agreement on July 29th, correct?
The email correspondence do not suggest that there was a meeting of the minds.
Okay, so there's a suggestion that there was really no extension agreed to on July 29th? It came after July 29th, if it came at all?
There may have been telephone conversations. I'm just saying what I have in writing does not support that you have the staff report that suggests the date that the applicant's representative requested. So, that would also suggest that there was some meeting of the minds, just not documented.
We don't know if there are any phone conversations, but in terms of the writings that we have, in terms of the emails, there was, there was no email confirmation from staff on July 29th that they had agreed to.
There's, there's no, no response to the, the counter from.
So, an argument might be made that there was no meeting of the minds, and therefore there was no agreement to an extension as of July 29th, so that based on our rules, that if there's no, if there's no response within 180 days, it's considered denied. Isn't that what you said earlier? I don't mean to sound like I'm cross-examining you.
No, 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 there's, no, I understand that you're, you're fleshing this you out. I think it's, I think there has to be some kind of notice to them that it is denied, that application is denied, but, but that, but that is what we've recommended. So I don't know if they're, we're on notice that failure to comply within the statutory timeframe would result in an automatic denial of the application.
Okay, so the, the, so, knowledge of the law is not a responsibility of the city to educate an applicant. I mean, they, they're represented by council. Council must know what the law is, and they must know that it's their responsibility to know the law. It's not our responsibility to educate them. I don't think our statute, or excuse me, or the statute or any ordinances that we have require us to give them notice of what the consequences are of the 180 days not being complied with. I think that it states it, basically what you said to us, that it states it clearly in the law, that if you, if we don't get a city response within 180 days, it's automatically denied. So, an argument might be made that as of July 29th, 2024, there was no meeting of the minds, and therefore there was no extension. And that, so, let's, let's just sit with that for a second. Let's continue. Now, if, if later, the two parties, the city staff and the applicant, spoke about an extension, then does, who gets, there are certain, there are certain steps that need to be taken according to our process under, under Site Level 3, which include review by Planning and Zoning, and the City Commission having the, the call-up authority if it chose to call it up, and a de novo hearing. Now, does an applicant get to choose the date that would eclipse the city's authority, the City Commission's authority, to ever review the application if it is approved by Planning and Zoning? I mean, wouldn't it, wouldn't that date have to be automatic to include the City Commission's ability to review? Or does the applicant have the, have the choice to, to basically cherry-pick the process and say, oh, wait, we'll give enough time for Planning and Zoning to review it, but we're not going to give enough time for the City Commission? Tell us about that.
So the state legislature was the one that kind of handcuffed municipalities in terms of the time period for the approval of the item. So we have the 180 days. The, the, the ability to extend beyond that 180 days, the statute provides for a reasonable extension if agreed upon by both parties. So we are both, in essence, have to come to an agreement on the extension. And our position in the city is that we have these processes that are required for the approval of our development permits, and that, that those are the terms that we tend to agree upon is extending these app, applications for, for a time period in which our processes can be completed.
Okay, but a, a city staff member does not have the authority, either the actual authority or the apparent authority, to deny the City Commission its call-up authority. I mean, they can pick a date, but they don't have the authority to eclipse the, the, the City, City Commission's authority and responsibility to make that decision of whether or not it wants to call it up. I mean, they can pick a date, but they, they don't have that authority to deny us that right, correct?
Well, I, I think that particular question of guidance on, on policy would be something for the Commission to kind of guide us on. You know, there's a lot of things that city staff and the, for the efficiency of process, operates on apparent authority and, and it allows for the system and the process to operate effectively and efficiently. If we're talking in particular, in this particular scenario, if there is a desire from the Commission to develop a process that you'd may, you'll be a little bit more comfortable to ensure the rights of the, particularly the Commission Request for Review. I mean, that can be something to discuss, but I think that's how staff has processed and has operated in the past.
Yeah, but it's implied that we go through the process. If the, if the 180 days has, has passed, and there's no agreement as to an extension, and then later, a staff member says, okay, well, let, let's keep talking about an extension, and, and then a staff member continues to participate in that dialogue about an extension, and they agree on an extension, does a staff member have the right to short-change the process? And the answer is no. A staff member cannot deny the City Commission its right to a call-up. You can't just, a staff member can't say, oh, we'll, we'll take this out of the hands of the Commission because I'm not sure it'll pass. Let's just let it go through the Planning and Zoning, get the approval there, and we'll agree on a shortened date, and therefore the Commission will never have a right to review it. That can't be the process. Because that. That can't be the process because that suggests, you know, corruption within the department, which we know doesn't exist. And I feel that is probably just a mistake on the part of our staff to have cut short the deadline and denied, and, and with the risk of denying the city commission the right to call up. So something tells me that, that there has to be an understanding by all applicants that the city commission, regardless of dates that are chosen or not chosen, the city commission always has the right to the call-up. Now, our staff said we wanted October eighteenth, and the applicant said, no, we don't want October eighteenth, we want September twenty-seventh. So September twenty-seventh cuts us up. No staff member has a right to agree to that, ever. So I don't see that as having been an impediment to our making the decision today whether or not we want to call it up. It's just, it doesn't make any sense. Otherwise, we're going to go back to the Ju-, July twenty-ninth date and say there was no agreement there and therefore it was denied, ipso facto, as they say in law.
So Mayor, I think, I think you make some great arguments. I, I think you do have the full right to call the item up and discuss this motion and set it in a hearing. I'm, I'm just cautioning the commission that I don't know what the, you know, the evidence that we have when it gets to Circuit Court, whether or not our arguments will prevail.
Okay, I understand. Now, there are a number of people have signed up to speak. Does anyone on the commission want to ask Mr. Spence any question before these folks get up to speak?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So Dwayne, and the case that you sent to us a week or two ago was the Hendrix Isle, and you mentioned the Hendrix project. So I just want to remind my colleagues, I was intimately involved in that, that was in my district, and I did not support that development project. And we did go as far as we went, but our, our hands were really tied because of that time limit and we didn't meet the requirements. Let me ask you this. Why are we not making sure that we don't run into these issues? Like, this was very perplexing for me to see that, again, we're running into this timing issue. Why aren't we doing all that we can to make sure that this is not even a concern, that we always are going to meet the timing requirements?
So I think staff, and I can't speak for them, but I, I believe that they have implemented processes to ensure that. I think this is an anomaly, and unfortunately.
This is the second time it's happened. How can it be an anomaly?
Third, but, um.
Third.
Third.
Actually, no, but that, that's a very good point.
You're helping your case, Dwayne.
Dwayne, I'd like you to speak to that while you're doing it, because this, this is the third time this has happened. So y'all may recall that we dealt with this back in January as well with, with another project, and that was the Ocean Harbor Residences, where we had the exact same set of circumstances where we were going to exceed the hundred and eighty days. The applicant was asked if they would agree to an extension. They did not. Commissioner Sterman made a motion to call it up for a hearing, and it died for a lack of a second for the same advice that we were receiving from Dwayne at this point in time, that we didn't have a legal case. So please speak to that.
If, if I recall the Ocean Harbor issue, that, in that particular case, so in this particular case, the applicant granted it, granted an extension so that the item could be heard at Planning and Zoning Board. In that particular case, the applicant granted an extension that brought us to the point where you could hear the motion to consider setting a de novo hearing. But there was a, a quick timeframe. The timeframe in which you could have the de novo hearing was set before the next scheduled city commission meeting, and you would have had to have set a special meeting to hear that item. And the motion was made by Commissioner Sterman and it was not seconded.
Okay, um, any other questions of, of Mr. Spence? All right, thank you. Don't go far, though.
So, so if, I just want, and I, I think I neglected to do the most important part of it, which is, in considering the motion, there are two things that you would have to consider if the project in the area, which is due to its characteristics of the project and the surrounding area, requires additional review in order to ensure that the development standards and criteria are met and to ensure that the area surrounding the development is protected from the impacts of the development. So that would be the criteria to consider if you move forward with considering the motion.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I just, uh, just, and, and just so everybody understands, when a decision is made by a Circuit Court judge, it doesn't have what they call precedential value. It's just the decision of that judge. If it weren't, if it were appealed and there was an opinion, that creates precedence. So one should not, one should not believe that because one judge understood the facts of that case and ruled the way they did, that it would necessarily impact the facts of another case that are, that are not entirely similar. Okay, we'll start, there's just a few people signed up to speak. Jim Concannon, followed by Courtney Crush, followed by Abby Loughlin. Jim, are you, are you here on behalf of the neighborhood?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
Okay, please proceed.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to talk tonight. After listening to that discourse, I think I'm even more confused than when I planned to come up here and talk. The premise for my neighborhood and others outside of the direct area to oppose what was being presented at P and Z where we lost was based on the comprehensive plan. The wording in the comprehensive plan, and I think it's important to read it, neighborhood compatibility, compatibility section requires that new development be compatible with and preserve the character and integrity of adjacent neighborhoods. That's neighborhoods, not neighbors. I understand the conditions that adjoining properties, why they approved the almost three-hundred-foot tower, but our position is that that tower is definitely not compatible with the character and integrity of the neighborhood. That's an RMH sixty zone. Everything on the other side of the street is also RMH sixty. Everything on Northeast Twenty-Sixth Avenue, which is behind that, is RMH sixty. So there's RMH sixty properties dotted through that entire Sunrise Intercoastal Peninsula, I'll refer to it. And this sets a precedent. So this isn't about one neighborhood objecting because there's a tall building. This is one neighborhood saying, there must be some way to come to a compromise of some sort. That's me saying this. That's not my board. That's me. That addresses the concerns of proximity to the adjacent buildings and also addresses the comprehensive plan, because that's, I think, what we're trying to do. So when, when we look at that, almost three-hundred-foot building is significantly higher than anything around there. The tallest one is the Corinthian, two hundred feet, approved back in the, in the seventies. Everything else is right at a hundred and fifty feet or slightly to our Aqua Blue is one.
How tall is Aqua Blue, do you recall?
Aqua Two, Aqua Blue is with everything included, it's one eighty-five.
One eighty-five, okay.
Right, so this is over a hundred feet taller. I think a lot of the commissioners received the drawings that I had sent out. I didn't send some of them, but I think you received them. It's clearly a very large structure. So how did we get to this point? Why are we talking about this tonight? It's the premise of neighborhood compatibility and integrity and the precedent that is being set by this building in an RMH sixty zone, which is adjacent to lower buildings. Further to that, there's obviously, because we've just spent a lot of time talking about this, there's a concern about how this is being defined, when the start date and the end date, the expiration date is being defined. We were under the impression, we never thought otherwise, were directed otherwise, that the twenty-seventh was the drop-dead date. I would also say that if you had the Planning and Zoning meeting on the eighteenth and the drop-dead date was on the twenty-seventh, how could you have a hearing, a commission hearing, like we're doing right now, in that timeframe? You can't. It's just, the, the numbers don't add up. So I question that, and, and again, I, I, I'm not here to try to incur legal fees for the, that the city would be borne, because we're going to pay for it as taxpayers. I'm here telling you our concerns, why we feel like the process was flawed, and to Commissioner Glassman's point, this does keep happening again and again and again. And I, I, I spoke to Commissioner Herbst the other night. We had a good discussion. I asked him to put it, make it an agenda item to address this, not down the road, not have a little discussion, but let's get some real definition if we're going to talk about a comprehensive plan. And there's not a lot of other people here in the audience tonight from other neighborhoods, but this does impact the city as a whole. If we're not going to follow the plan, okay, then let's make that known. But if we are going to follow the plan and try to respect the integrity and character of neighborhoods, that there needs to be clear definition of what that is. And there needs to be an adherence by Planning and Zoning, who seems to not really address that. It just didn't seem to matter. I, I, it, it's very confusing and I don't think it's fair to the community at large.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
May, may I ask him a question?
Go ahead.
Thanks. Actually, just two questions. I, I read the minutes in the backup from Planning and Zoning. This passed Planning and Zoning five to two.
Yes.
I want to hear your take on that, but more importantly, I want to know, was any of this timeline, these dates, was this ever, because I didn't see it in minutes, was it ever discussed at all in terms of, we're up against the clock here?
No.
This has to, none of, none of this discussion happened?
No, no, and I have looked on, on the, the website for Planning and Zoning, and I've never seen the minutes. They're still not up there. I checked tonight before I came here. There are no minutes for us to review. So I have, until Friday afternoon, when Commissioner Herbst contacted me to tell me that this item was being pulled, that the time had expired, I called the deputy city attorney, Mr. Spence. We had a very cordial conversation. I understand where he's boxed in because of the previous situations on Hendrix Isle, the, the precedent that that set. So I understand that. And I just said what I said tonight, that I don't feel like we really knew what the, what the time was. And even if we did, if we look at the timeframe of Planning and Zoning on the eighteenth, well, the next commission meeting is tonight, which is beyond the twenty-seventh of September. So how can you do that?
Well, that's the whole point.
That is the point.
That's the whole point.
Thank you.
Was there, did I get, get both of your questions?
Yeah.
Okay, and I still haven't seen the minutes of the, the meeting. Thank you all very much.
And Jim, by the way, that's why I brought it up during our, during my commission reports today, because that's precisely what I'm referring to, Mayor. So I think one of the things we need to do as we look at this is our process needs to make sure that P and Z, when they're hearing something, always leaves us enough time for call-up period.
Well, it does, and that's the thing. In other words, a staff member cannot agree, has no authority to agree to a date that, that eclipses the city's, uh, city commission's ability to call up and review this matter. So that's, that's, there's no flaw in the process. There's just no authority for a city, city staff member to agree to that. Anytime there's an extension, there's a presumption that the extension is going to include time for the P and Z and time for the commission. They can't just game the system and say, oh, well, we're just going to agree to P and Z and we're not going to let, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. So if, once we pass the hundred and eighty days, we're outside the statute. It's not, the statute doesn't apply anymore because we've gone past the statute and now it's up, it's, all the city's processes kick in. And there's no process in the city, in the city's history or in the city's, what's the word I'm thinking of? There's no, there's no place in the city's process for, for a staff member to agree to leave out any, any part of the approval process, and that includes the city commission. All right, thank you, Jim.
And I do, and I do feel like at some point, we should have been informed by the city staff or someone what the timeframe was. I don't know if we could have done anything about it. We could have contacted Mr. Herbst or any, none of you, I asked all of you for a call-up, but, you know, we didn't know that. So again, thank you very, very much.
You're very welcome.
And, and, and so Mayor, what that, you know, back in my, in my previous iteration of life as an auditor, one of the things we always say is that controls that rely on individuals are flawed controls. From an internal controls perspective, we need a system, because the system should automate, look, it's very simple to automate stuff like this. It looks at this date, it looks at that date, and it says it doesn't work. It's a yes, no question. And so when you rely on individuals to catch these kinds of things is where I think we run into problems. So again, I want to go back, I want to look at, at, this is, this is an internal control question of how does our process work? Why didn't the process, I'm not trying to point any fingers at any individuals. It didn't work, and suffice it to say, that's a problem. But what I'd like staff to do, and maybe come back and, and we can talk about this at some point later, but really, this is an internal control question. What failed in our process that it wasn't flagged? And, because I think that's what critical, this is the third time that we're looking at, at a situation that's like this. And so what that tells me is that we need a fix that doesn't rely on people to catch things, on people to catch dates. The system needs to catch the dates. It's, again, it's pretty straightforward, you know, kind of a, a scenario, but clearly process improvement is, 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 is being called for here.
Okay.
May I just say one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
In, in terms of what I said about precedent, and I've heard from several people that this is not going to set a precedent, I find that very hard to believe for RMH sixty, because if somebody wants to build on one of those properties, why can't they apply for a conditional use to up to three hundred feet if they feel that the building next door is too close? So it really just kind of cascades. There really is no way to prevent that.
You're right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Courtney Crush, followed by Abby Loughlin, followed by Rick Sibelli. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Courtney Crush on behalf of the applicant. I'm here this evening in a limited special appearance to state that the application was deemed complete and approved by the city's Planning and Zoning Board on September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four by operation of law. Specifically, Florida Statute Section one sixty-six point zero-three-three requires a municipality, as has been relayed, to approve or deny or take final action on a development order within a hundred and eighty days.
And if it doesn't, what happens?
The statute further provides, and I'll defer to your attorney, that there may be a mutually agreed upon extension, which there was.
Well, wait a minute, wait. Answer my question. What happens if it's not agreed, if it's not approved within a hundred and eighty days? What happens?
The, again, I'm going to defer to the city attorney. The statute states that it may be extended by agreement of both parties.
I understand that, but you're not answering my question. If, 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 if you're relying on the statute and the statute says it must be approved within a hundred and eighty days and there's no approval.
Unless extended by mutual agreement of the parties.
Right, but, but, okay, we'll get to that. We'll get to that.
I was just saying what the statute says.
I know, I know, but we'll get to that. But if it's not extended by the end of the hundred and eighty days, what happens to the application?
Mayor, I'm not the right person to answer that question.
You don't know what happens to your client's application if the, if there's no extension after a hundred and eighty days?
That is correct.
Oh, okay.
Nor candidly, Mayor, I think with the plain reading of the statute, I think one would have to look to the legislature or to your city attorney. I think Attorney Spence explained a policy to you by the city. I'm not privy to that per se, so I am not going to speak beyond the language of the statute.
So, so did you, did you have an extension, did you have an agreed to extension date on the hundred and eightieth day, the July twenty-ninth?
Mayor, if I may.
Please proceed.
Certainly. In this matter, the time for consideration of the application for approval or denial has already expired, and as a matter of law, the application was therefore approved. In addition to the plain language of the statute, legal precedent makes clear that the application has already been approved. Such precedent includes the case of five hundred Hendrix LLC versus the city of Fort Lauderdale. I do understand, Mayor and commission, the city commission might wish to call, have a call-up discussion for the project seeking. a call-up discussion for the project seeking further review, specifically case number UDP 24005. Based on the state statute previously mentioned, applicable case law, any such action by the city commission would be contrary to the aforementioned statute, case law, and is accordingly precluded and moot. The applicant does reserve all rights under law, equity, statute, and otherwise. And I very much appreciate you allowing me to make that statement, Mayor.
Okay. And I appreciate your making your statement. Now, if we can get back so I can, I can understand your position. So you, you had said that the state statute requires the city to take action within 180 days from the date that the application is deemed complete. And that date has been determined to be July 29th, because July 28th falls on a Sunday.
I'm not going to speak to that. That was a date reflected, and again, I'm going to maintain my objection to the commission discussing the call-up, as previously stated. For informational purposes, I believe Mr. Spence advised that the application was accepted.
On, on February 2nd?
On February 2nd. That is not, as a point of reference, I think July 28th would reflect a 180-day period from January 30th versus the 2nd. I'm just relaying that. This is all uploaded online, but I, I'm not saying that was not what was perhaps in city records. I'm just, I want, I, I just wanted to be accurate.
So you're saying July 29th was not the 180th day, then?
I'm saying that I would have to...
What is the 180th day from your perspective?
I, I don't, I don't have a perspective on that.
Oh, you don't, you don't know?
I was just noting the dates relayed. What, what had been, I, I'm looking at what's on the city's system, I'm looking at an issue in state, and then I believe that July 28th is close. It could be July 30th.
Mayor?
Wait, wait, hold on, wait, hold on.
Courtney, do you need it?
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on. So, so do you recall the date in which there was an agreed upon extension between yourself and a member of the city staff?
Yes, July 29th. It was a Monday.
It was a Monday. Do you have any evidence of that? Was there an email exchange that you agreed on a certain date?
There was...
Because according to Mr. Spence, there was, there was an email from us and an email from you, which had two different dates.
And then a subsequent phone call, and I believe, again, I'm going to reiterate my objection to this discussion by the commission with enormous respect for each and every one of you. The, the, that correspondence, I believe, is in the application file online, labeled as the waiver correspondence.
Right. But, but was there an actual, was there any, was there any returned correspondence from the city to respond to your request for a different date that occurred on July 29th?
There was the city staff report, which memorialized, consistent with the city online records, 60 days from approximately that date. It's on page one of the Planning and Zoning Board's staff report, as the original and the extended, as was discussed and et cetera.
Right. But was that done on July 29th?
There were no subsequent conversations on date.
There were no subsequent conversations. Okay. All right. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. So Courtney, I just, I'm looking at all these dates. I thought you just said, though, September 18th was the date that you had mentioned as the application was deemed complete. What did you say about September 18th just now?
I may have said earlier that was the Planning and Zoning Board hearing date.
But you, you said that that was what you considered to be the, the date when the application was deemed complete. Is that true? Or did I misunderstand?
I must have misspoken, Vice Mayor.
Because I wrote that down when you said it.
Application complete, I understand what, according to Attorney Spence, he said February 2nd.
Okay. So February 2nd. Okay. So, Mayor, this is also what I find a little bit confusing. So the commission received an email from Attorney Spence on Friday, September 27th, telling us that this item was going to be removed from the agenda tonight. And in that, in that email, he, he cites the section of the Florida statutes with regards to the timeline of all of this in the 180 days. But he says the application was deemed complete on January 30th, 2024. And I haven't heard that date yet. I've heard a lot of dates. But that email to us the other day says the application was deemed complete on January 30th, 2024. So I just need to get some clarification on that. And then I want to know why we received this email saying that this item was being removed from the agenda.
Vice Mayor Glassman, with, with respect to January 30th, July 28th is 180 days from January 30th.
July 28th. Okay. And you did have an agreement to extend beyond July 28th, both parties?
Again, reiterating my objection to this discussion.
Okay.
For informational purposes, yes.
Okay. So maybe if I could just find out why we received this email saying that this was being removed from the agenda tonight, and then also why all of a sudden we have January 30th as a date, not, not February, not September, not July? Just, it's, it's, it's interesting. There's a lot of information here, a lot of different conflicting dates and timelines, and the fact that I didn't even know that this was going to be on the agenda. I thought, based on this email, that this was being pulled from the agenda.
That was the original request by, by the city manager and Mr. Spence, but I had asked it to stay on the agenda so we can have this conversation.
Okay.
That's the end.
Thank you.
Deputy City Attorney Dwayne Spence. In regards to the reason my email was sent, counsel for the applicant reached out to inform us that they've reviewed, that once the agenda was published, that they reviewed the CAM and noticed that the date, October 18th, stated in the CAM was incorrect. They directed our attention, after that call, we took a look at the staff report for the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. On the first page of that staff report, down at the bottom, we have the dates for the 180-day expiration date, which is stated as July 28, 2024, and the extension date as September 27, 2024. So I quickly sent that correspondence based on the dates that were in the backup. I did not independently calculate the dates. Counsel has just referenced that the completeness was done for February 2nd. That is correct. That would have calculated a different expiration date. But again, based on the information that we had available at the time, that is the reason for the email.
Why, why did the CAM say, quote, "The applicant has agreed to an extension of a time as permitted by Section 166.0331 Florida Statutes to October 18th, 2024, to accommodate the 30-day city commission call-up period"?
I can't speak to that. That would have to be something that staff relates.
Can anyone tell me why the CAM states that?
And, and Al, I believe it was the understanding of staff at the time that that was the case, but I will let you expound.
Al Battle Development Services, that goes, this goes back to the point that was made earlier about the not meeting of the mines with respect to the extension being agreed to.
Whose mines are we talking about? I'm just curious.
I don't think I prefer not, it's one of our, our planners, one of our, one of our planners communicating with the applicant.
Okay. So the, the mines are a planner and the applicant? Those mines?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Well, Al, now that you're here, let me ask you this question. So do you think there's anybody in your department that has the authority to preclude the city commission from taking this up for review?
No. I'll reiterate what I believe Mr. Spence outlined earlier, which is when we request the extension, and is our attempt to include the entire process with whatever that includes. So in this instance, a site plan level three, if it was approved by the Planning and Zoning Board, then the extension, in essence, should also include the ability for the commission to call it up.
So the September 27th date would have prevented that from happening. How did we arrive at September 27th as the, in the backup of the, of, of the, in the backup that was presented to planning and zoning? How did that, how did we arrive at that date when we knew that October 18th was necessary in order for the commission to exercise its right for review?
I'll call that an error in, in calculating the date in which it should have, have occurred on our end.
Okay.
So, Mayor, if I, if I may, just based on the information that Ms. Crush put on the record with regards to the statute, I just need to, you know, clarify and make, make the commission aware of the difficult position that staff is in with regards to the statute. The statute does provide for the deadline that the final action has to occur, but it does not provide a remedy or a penalty for the, for, or provides what happens if the municipality does not exercise its final authority within that timeframe. We are trying to honor the system that our city has in place for review, and we do need this time in order to properly review these projects. And that is why the policies, as recommended, have been put in place, trying to work within the, the framework that the state legislature has put upon the municipalities.
I understand that. So, but after, but at the 180-day period, is the project deemed automatically approved? Or is it, is it automatically not approved?
The statute is silent on, on what occurs there.
So the statute is silent. Okay.
Right.
But what, what's our policy, then? Do we have a policy?
It is, we, we...
Maybe we don't have a policy.
We, we've discussed certain strategies with staff. I, I don't think we've adopted anything in, in terms of formal policy without, to address these.
So if, all right, if, scenario one would be if 180 days passes and there's no response from the city, then it's, one, one scenario would be then the applicant's building that they first presented is automatically approved, whatever that building is, then that would be one scenario. The second scenario is it's not approved. So we have one or two choices, but we never have, we, we've never, we've never had this situation arise in any of the buildings that have been applied for in the city.
No, and, and I think, in all practical matters, I think what, what would end up happening is what happened in part of that 500 Hendricks Isle situation, which is the applicant probably will go to the court to seek a writ of mandamus to force the city to act upon their application, saying that the statutory time has waived. But I don't think we arrived to a point where there's an automatic approval or denial, which is why there has to be some action on the, the part of the department when we are looking at the timeframe and the suggestion with regards to treating the application as denied, which, which is, the presumption being that the, it's incomplete in terms of demonstrating that they meet all of the criteria. But there's other mechanisms that we'd have to work through because our, our code does call out which body is supposed to approve the application. So there's some difficulties with that as well.
Well, I mean, let's look at that writ of mandamus that was issued by the court. The writ of mandamus said you must issue the permit. It didn't, it said 180 days has passed, you waived your rights to deny it, so you got to issue the permit. Isn't that what happened?
It is, but it also, the Planning and Zoning Board had already acted upon the permit.
Right. And, and approved it.
And approved it, correct.
Right. Okay.
Can I, can I jump in?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because, Mayor, you said something, you said something interesting, and I, and I think I just heard something a little bit different from Dwayne. So I want, I want some clarity on this. So the mayor brought up a point about ignorance of the law is no, is no defense. And that's if we had an ordinance in place that required us to deny it in those circumstances as described. But you're saying we didn't have an ordinance. There's nothing in our municipal code that would have denied it. And so it sounds like more it's a practice that was not codified, it was a policy. Would, would any applicant be required to know what our internal practices or policies or, you know, past behavior was? Is that, is, so the mayor's like ignorance of the law issued? Does that apply to our internal practices? Is somebody required to know how we operate internally? And if they don't, is, is that, is that a defense?
I don't even know how we operate internally.
I, I'm, I'm not sure anybody does at this point. I'm starting to wonder. But no, because, because you make a very good point.
That's a rhetorical question. You don't have to answer that. Can you answer that? It's not, I don't, obviously, you can't answer that question, so. Okay. Thank you. Abby Loughlin?
Press here? Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Abby Loughlin, Seminole Drive, Coral Ridge. I live directly across from Sunrise Intercoastal, and I live two doors away from a whole string of RMH 60 properties. So I don't know if anyone was here. 10 years ago, almost to the day that we heard the hearing on Aqua Blue, it was about 2:00.
I was here.
You were there. One, two, three. Anyone else here?
I was in the audience.
Okay, you were in the audience. Okay. And, and I feel like, you know, every worst-case scenario that was presented that evening has come to fruition this, tonight. You know, you, you talk about, Mayor, that there's no right to eclipse the city's ability to review, but I feel like in this particular case, the public's ability to review has been eclipsed. And we were told on, you know, at the planning and zoning hearing, we were told, oh, you know, don't worry, you still have time to meet with the developer, you know, there's still going to be plenty of time to come to some type of compromise. There's a, there'll be a call-up. So that, that was our expectations. And then Friday, we were told that this was pulled from the agenda. So the public didn't even have an opportunity to, you know, to know that this was going to be discussed. And I thank you very much, Mayor, for, you know, allowing this discussion tonight. This is precedent-setting property, setting property. I mean, staff may say that each property is looked at individually, but I can tell you that, you know, the applicant's application for this certainly uses Aqua Blue as, as a precedent for this, for this property. We're talking about, what was presented at P and Z was not even the original project that was shown to the, the, you know, area. It was a much smaller building. You know, no one in the neighborhood had an opportunity to review this new proposal. And I think what irks me the most is one of the reasons that P and Z, you know, approved this, this property was, they said, oh, well, this is going to give, you know, better views and better light and air to the abutting properties. Well, I mean, I remember Corinthian being, you know, yelled at for saying, how dare you want, you know, better views and better light and air? And I can think of, you know, at least three or four hearings I've seen on properties where you're told you have absolutely no right to review or to light and air. And yet that was, you know, the basis for this, this taller, skinnier building. So I, I, I don't feel that the public has had, you know, any opportunity to weigh on this and, you know, not allowing a de novo hearing. I mean, I, I don't think this is anything like the, the, the 500 Hendricks property. That, you know, that was, that was denied. That's a, that's a very, you know, that was not a precedent 27-story setting building that is going to affect, you know, you're right near the Galleria Mall, you're right near a whole bunch of other undeveloped RMH 60 buildings. If this is allowed, if a 300-foot building is allowed to go without... If this is allowed, if a 300-foot building is allowed to go without, you know, public input and without commissioners having the ability to weigh into it, I really am concerned about the, the future of, of this area.
All right, thank you.
So, thank you.
Mr. Farhado, can you come up here for just a second? You don't have to put your jacket on. When, to Abby's point, the building that was presented at first application was, is quite a bit different than the one that Planning and Zoning reviewed. Wouldn't it have to go back to DRC? I mean, staff can't just tweak a building that goes up another 100 feet. It's, isn't there like a 10% standard that if it's within 10%, staff can, can make adjustments? But this is a completely different building that started out from one building A and went to a completely different building before Planning and Zoning. Tell us about that process and how that could occur.
Sure. So acknowledging that I'm no longer in DSD, and I haven't really reviewed this, but typically what you're talking about is the different thresholds for the levels of review. So if it was a staff-level approval process at DRC, and then there was some sort of change after that approval happened, if, if the change had exceeded those percentage thresholds, we would require it to go back to DRC. In this case, since it went back to, since it went forward through DRC to Planning and Zoning Board, it was still in process, so they can still make adjustments.
What I thought was the application was considered complete on January 30th or February 2nd, doesn't that mean something?
Yeah, it does, but that's usually have to go, that usually has more to do with the backup information that's attached to it and all the details of the project. It can change, and projects do change through the approval process, and they're, they're altered. I mean, they've, they've been altered at the quasi-judicial level by the various approving bodies on, on occasion, so it does kind of morph.
But can it morph that much? I never heard, I mean, I've sat here a few times.
Yeah.
And I've seen buildings come and go. And, and we've never morphed that much to, to a completely different building. I mean, it's like, it's like saying, you know, you have a single-family home versus, you know, a, a, you know, four-unit, a townhouse complex, you know, those are completely different projects. And yet you start out with one and end it with another. I don't see how staff can, can permit that. Where's the authority to do that?
So I don't think it's a matter of necessarily direct authority with staff, it's a matter of how the code relates the changes to applications. So again, if it was something that was approved at the staff level and then it changes, staff could do an administrative approval if it didn't go past any of those thresholds. This was already in a process and hadn't gone to the approving body yet, so the alterations were happening during the process from what I understand. Ella Parker's here, and she, and she's run the DRC for many, many years, she might be able to give you a little more of the nuance on, on where those thresholds lie. But I would say that if, if it is a substantially different project from what it was originally submitted and seen and heard at the DRC, which is a public meeting, not a quasi-judicial meeting, that it probably behooves staff to talk to the applicant, bring it back to DRC, so that those things can, but it's all going to depend on what, what it was in the beginning and what it's turned into.
Okay, so we, we know that what it was in the beginning is completely different than what it was in the end, I mean, by, by a lot. And so that's what, that's what really puzzles me, because I can't, I'd never heard of a building being completely transformed in so many different ways and not going back to DRC. There are different considerations completely that, you know, electrical, mechanical, everything goes, is different when you have a, when you, when you reshape the building and add multiple stories to it. I mean, how does it somehow slip through the process and, and, and it doesn't come back to DRC? I mean, Ella, do you want to chime in on this?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Ella Parker, acting DSD, Deputy Director. It's a lot, it's a mouthful. So part of the reason that it was allowed to move into, through the process is because the request was still the same. It's a conditional use request for additional height. The applicant was required to go back to the community and present this new revised project, and part of the DRC comments in addressing the application spoke to a request to provide for additional setback between the buildings, so that the buildings weren't so close together, so they weren't so impactful on the light and air and the public chrome and so forth. So the applicant, in meeting with the community and based on some of the discussions that they had, made those changes based on some of the comments, but also based on the comments that they heard from the public outreach that they had done. So when they came back to us and presented this new building, we looked at, we, we actually requested that our staff, such as engineering and others, take a look at, to see what technical changes this had, and there, there in effect weren't that many changes. It, it meant that the tower got slimmer. To your point, yes, some mechanical change, but those things are considered at building permit. What didn't change is the podium, any of the, you know, ingress egress. The units actually got less, so there was less impact on traffic. The shadow study showed that the lot coverage changed from like, what was about 40% to 30%. So taking all that into account and knowing that we send it back to the public to review it, and the board, ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Board, had the authority to approve it, obviously with the call-up, and by the way, we had every intention of having the commission review it, that was the staff's intent when we asked for that extension. We apologize sincerely for what happened.
Apology, you know, that's, that's, thank you for the apology, but this is catastrophic.
Yeah, I understood.
Mayor, I have a question. Ms. Parker just indicated that the applicant was required to go back to the community. This is the first time I'm hearing that, that was a requirement. Anna said that there was no interaction with the community. Ms., Crush, Crush, could you, was there any conversation with the community? Is this?
Commissioner Beasley Pittman, I, I think you were quoting someone, and I thought you meant Abby, about lack of engagement with the community?
Yes, I, I said Anna, but it's Abby.
Oh, she wasn't, she wasn't clear on, on making that statement. So with respect to the community, and by community here, I'm speaking to residential neighbors along the west side of the intercoastal.
Okay.
The, starts on Sunrise Boulevard, there's a hotel, but then you have the Corinthian condominium.
Okay.
South of that, you have the Aqua Blue condominium, which the Mayor and Vice Mayor Glassman recall, probably Commissioner Herbst too. And then south of this property, 900, is Sunrise Tower. So as we were working through the site plan as presented to DRC, Mayor, those three buildings that I mentioned, as well as Sunrise Intercoastal, had objections to the initial proposal. So during the summer, we were approached by neighbors, again, all four groups talking, but specifically by our immediate neighbors, about making a taller, thinner tower. And so we absolutely did meet in our office, shared options that I think Mr. Kinkanen referred to, design tower changes at the request of neighbors, and that went for, I think, second half of July and August to get, to get feedback. Ultimately, our immediate neighbors preferred one of the design options, the one that the Planning and Zoning Board reviewed and approved, and Mr. Kinkanen and his board, I think, relayed back, and perhaps some of the additional neighbors did not support that option. And the Corinthian, I don't believe, has ever, I, I think their position and their comments on an application are consistent regardless of what the tower form was, whether it was the original or the one that went to the Planning and Zoning Board.
But was the formal public outreach process followed all along? When you changed it from building A to building C, was there, did you go back and completely redo the public outreach? What is it, 350 feet? What is, what is it now? What is the, what is the, what is, how far do you have to notify neighbors when you do public outreach? 300 feet?
So you do, we did a public participation meeting in May for neighbors within 300 feet. That picks up the west side of the intercoastal, most of the condominium neighbors, three properties in Sunrise Intercoastal, and some of the neighbors to the west. Those same stakeholders, who are the ones who asked for the design changes, are those with whom we continue to meet and discuss. With the case of the Corinthian, I, I, I don't know that there was, there was follow-up communication, I'll let some of our neighbors speak to that, but they, they all wanted to come speak to us with one voice.
All right, because I, I mean, I'm hearing from the Corinth, members of the Corinthian, which they claim they were left out of the process. But anyway, to, to your point, Commissioner Beasley Pittman, there is a question about how much, how much neighbor input there was through this process. I, I'm just very concerned about how we start out with one type of building, and I understand that through the neighborhood outreach, there were concerns about the design of the building and so forth. But I, I'm really wondering how it never went back to DRC, considering this is a completely different building. I mean, you admit it's a completely different building when you started out, correct?
It is a taller, thinner tower. It's actually the same building, same site plan, it is.
It's not, it's, it's, I'm sorry.
When we get to the tower, it has a different form, as encouraged by city staff and strongly encouraged by the community.
But I'm just, but, but to answer my question, it's not the same building. It's a taller building. Building C is a taller building than building A, right?
Certainly. And with respect to the scope, again, maintaining my objections to having this conversation, the, what changed in the building was an elevator core and shadow was reevaluated.
The height was not changed?
The height, the height absolutely changed.
By how much?
The elevator core, and as I was saying, increased build, tower height, and that would be evaluated, yeah, with respect to shadow. The taller, thinner building, and I know you can see this from the Planning and Zoning Board discussion, when it's memorialized, greatly reduced the shadow on the intercoastal waterway. So staff had that type of review on a planning and, and then the building department. And we, and we shared it with our neighbors with whom we had been communicating and who were objecting to the original building.
How does, how does a taller building sustain a reduced shadow? If anything, it would increase the shadow, probably went across the intercoastal into the park, into Bonnet, Bonnet House Park. I don't understand, it doesn't even make any sense.
So Mayor Anthony Farhado, again, I can answer that question because I had to answer a similar question many, many years ago. The shadow calculation is an area calculation, it's not about the length of the shadow. So when you look at a skinnier building, you would effectively say that in that box that's created with the ordinance, that the shadow is smaller because the building is narrower. So what you'll find is it's counterintuitive to what you would normally think, but it is an area calculation, it's not really a distance calculation.
And, and maybe you can answer this question, because I can't seem to get a straight answer. Do you recall what the height of the original building design was and what the height of the, the, the building that was approved by Planning and Zoning? Do you know?
It's, my understanding, the original building was 175, 178, and they went up to 300, 290.
292.
292.
Yeah. So that's 120 feet.
Yes.
118 feet difference. And that's not considered, that shouldn't have gone back to DRC? Okay, I mean.
Well, again, I want to, I want to just reiterate that it was in the DRC process. It is, it's in a DRC process up until it goes into Planning and Zoning Board, they have to file an application for that next step, so it was part of DRC.
So it wasn't complete then on January 20th then? It wasn't complete on January 20th? It, it, it continued to evolve, and so technically, it wasn't complete, you're still working on it for all those many months. See, the whole thing just sounds so loosey-goosey. How do you, I mean, how are we supposed to have some sort of certainty and finality in the process that prevents flops that, that, that have now occurred, that we, I mean, right now, this city commission, if it chose to, and maybe we'll just take a straw poll and see whether I'm just, you know, talk, being the only one talking in this way, but how do we prevent the fact that the city commission no longer is being allowed to, to make a decision with regard to this building because the process seems to, seems to go in so many different directions? First, DRC has finality on January 20th, and then all of a sudden, or, or July, or, excuse me, or February 2nd, whichever those dates are, and, and then it sort of meanders its way all these many months, and then somehow ends up in the lap of Planning and Zoning, a completely different building, okay? It, it just doesn't make sense. And then the dates are chosen to deny the city commission its right to call up, none of this makes any sense. And, and I cannot believe a city of this size and this sophistication has such a loose development review process as we seem to, considering all the buildings that we have approved or not approved, that we have, we have worked with different developers over the many years, and now this is what we're left with. Something, something doesn't sound like, something doesn't smell right here. And I, and I'm very concerned about what has been going on that allowed this particular applicant to manipulate the process and to game the system, to deny the commission its right to review this, this proposal. And now we're sitting here trying to figure out what happened from the beginning and how we ended up this way. And, and to me, there's, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of questions that have been unanswered, and I'm very concerned about the way we do business. So I have no more questions. There are other people, though, who were signed up to speak, so excuse me. Rick Sebeli, is Rick here? Oh, Rick, followed by Tyler Heelis, followed by Joe Slema.
You're on.
Marvelous. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much. This has been a very long day and very educational for somebody who's never sat in a meeting like this before. My name is Rick Sebeli. I actually did say on the forum, I'm going to speak on behalf of the Sunrise Intercoastal Homeowners Board, but I'm actually going to speak on behalf of myself. I'm a homeowner who's lived in that neighborhood for the last 11 years. I am the treasurer of the, of the Board of Sunrise Intercoastal, but again, I must speak on personal comments. I thank you for your leadership in asking these questions, because we have asked them ourselves and don't seem to get much answers, so to bring it up in a public forum, I appreciate that leadership in asking that. The conversations this evening has been interesting, just in regards to the number of dates and everything else, you just kind of want to ask the question, right? What did you know? When did you know? And, you know, who did you, who knew it at that time? But the end state of this is really comes down to the simple fact that you mentioned before, which is regardless of the dates, regardless of what was agreed, extended, not extended, and everything else, which there's a grand deal of confusion around, my point comes back to, in the end, here's a project that is 100 feet taller than the surrounding buildings inside that neighborhood. So it's not like it's just, oh, it's kind of the same size and the same shape, what's there, and maybe the process wasn't followed the best or communicated the best, but the outcome of this is a almost 300-foot building that does not fit, as Jim said earlier, what's in the city plan. And while that's the case, my biggest frustration is that our recourse is to bring it to you for your vote, and that's been denied in this process. So that's my biggest complaint. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Tyler Heelis, followed by Joe Slema. Is Tyler here?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor and the rest of the commission for allowing me to speak. My name's Tyler Heelis, and I live at Aqua Blue, and I'm the president of the Board of Directors as well. You know, a lot's been said here, and I'm certainly no attorney, and I can't speak to dates and process and all that, but I, I have followed the conversation and thought it very interesting. I can, however, speak. I can, however, speak to what has happened in the, the development of Sage. Initially, we, as a total, well, a large community, being the Corinthian, Sunrise Intercoastal, Sunrise Tower, and Aqua Blue, met with Ms. Crush and representatives from PMG several times. Originally, nobody thought the first option or first iteration of the building was acceptable. For Aqua Blue, our largest concern from the beginning has always been safety and privacy. The original building was only 60 feet away from our glass windows for the entire south side of our building, which is virtually all glass. It's, it's really very close. And there was a large amount of concern within our building and Sunrise Tower of the safety in a hurricane, of creating a wind tunnel with possible tornadic activity. We have a resident that lived at the Hermitage during 2005 and reported having that happen there with extensive damage to high-impact glass windows. And their buildings are further apart than 60 feet. You know, there's been a lot of comments about views, and I just want to be really clear, we never use that word. There's no question, any of the options that PMG provided to us are going to eliminate our views to the south. Our only concern in engaging with them, which I really want to thank PMG and Ms. Crush for engaging with us so much over months, to listen to our concerns and to our, our ideas and questions on how we could improve the safety and the privacy of the building. And I think that's what drove the narrower and therefore taller option. And also, a lot of people in our building really enjoy watching the aquatic wildlife, particularly the manatees and the birds that are, you know, probably living at Bonnet House. And we are very concerned that in its original design, there would have been a solid wall of shade from the south side of Sage all the way to the north side of Gallery One. Whereas in its current format, it really opens up light and air getting through to the intercoastal, not only for the enjoyment of the boating community, but also for, you know, animals, be they aquatic or, you know, birds or anything else. And I think it gives a real opportunity to have something that isn't so cookie cutter, just like one block after another making a solid wall. PMG had a town hall meeting with our building. They've also met extensively with Sunrise Tower. We did reach out to Theo Fols from Corinthian. He has met with them as well as has Jim Concanon. And over time, they declined to continue meeting with us. Theo, I think, has some health issues that makes that more difficult for him. But we, Victor Luzan, who's on the Board of Directors of Sunrise Tower, was extremely active and continues to be with me in terms of meeting with PMG and Ms. Crush, along with some of our residents, Ed Hunt and Joe Ando, to further define and make sure that we're doing the best we can to address the neighborhood's concerns and that our two buildings being the immediate neighbors. Sunrise Tower has some flooding issues. They have overhead wire issues. There's a, they have a laundry list of issues that PMG is going to address. In one of our more recent rainstorms, we had a car flooded out on Intercoastal Drive in front of Sunrise Tower. I've never seen that before. And it was there for, I think, about three or four days. So that's one of the things that they're going to address with their new design, and I'm, I'm very grateful for their flexibility and willingness to try to address our major safety and privacy concerns. Jim, in his opening statement, had talked about compromise, and I would just like to say that we're, Aqua Blue is very willing to compromise or negotiate, but the only party that has engaged us in doing so is PMG. And we, that's what we've acted on.
Well, you know, I happen to be familiar with Aqua Blue.
Yes, I know.
And that building started out, I think, at 243 feet or something like that. And in the wee hours of the night, we took a break, and I ended up negotiating with the developer down to the height that it is today. And, and that's compromise. So, but he didn't widen the building. He didn't say, oh, if it's shorter, it's going to be fatter. And, and that's what's being told to us now. Oh, I can't make any money if I have to reduce the size, the height of the building and, and keep the narrowness of it. You know, that's the story we're being told. You know, you're going to make money, a person's going to make money no matter what because of the demand for high-end real estate in Fort Lauderdale. But we're told the only way they can make money is if they add to the height and, and, and reduce the, the side yard setback. You know, th- those are not choices that we have to accept. And, you know, during those, again, those, that late night, we set a standard. We thought we had set a standard, and that Aqua Blue was the standard. And if there's going to be an Aqua Blue Two, we were calling it, which is what we're dealing with now, it was going to be a similar size. And, and that was the expectation. Now, this developer's not, wasn't part of that, they were not privy to it, they were not a party to that. So we can't hold them to that. But the neighbors at the time, was it 10 years? The neighbors at the time all said, this is what we found acceptable. Now, a new developer comes in and says, well, I want to build bigger and, and larger and, you know, taller and all that because I want to make more money. So, and I guess our process allows for all these conditional approvals, but it should never preclude the commission from participating in that decision-making. And that's the issue we see tonight.
I don't disagree with you at all, and the only thing I would say in, in kind of my own defense and, and Victor's and Ed and Joe's is, we don't have your power. So we-
Well, apparently, we don't either.
We were just, you know, the immediate neighbors doing our best to look out for-
And we understand.
Our safety and privacy.
I totally understand that.
And we thought we did the best we could.
I know, hey, we appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
May I ask just one question?
Sure.
Because you had mentioned the original plan, what, you were 60 feet away from the new project. The, the project that was passed at Planning and Zoning creates what, what is that setback now?
It's just under 100 feet, but it was actually worse to begin with because it was 60 feet from our glass to their glass, but then it also, their balconies infringed on that 60 feet. And so it got really, really close.
But now it's 100 roughly?
Yeah, it's just under 100. I believe it's 97.3, but don't hold me to that-
Okay.
To the inch, but it's just under 100.
And Mayor, you might have more information than I do or the rest of us do on that, but I'm not sure, if they go taller and thinner, I don't know why it's, they make more money or it's more units. I think you actually will have less units on a floor if you go taller and thinner. No, I maybe I'm wrong, I don't, I don't know how many units we've gone from what to what, but I, I don't know that for a fact that it's-
I think it's approximately the same number of units.
Yes.
Then how do they make, then why do they make more money?
No, I said, I, no, what I'm saying is, if they keep the same number of units, they wanted to keep the same number of units to be able to make a certain dollar amount, right? But if they, if they had to reduce the units, that's what he's saying. He didn't want to reduce the number of units.
They went from four to two per floor.
But I'm just saying that it's the same number of units now.
That's, yeah, I understand that, but it's also much, it's 100 feet taller. It's 100 feet taller. So in order to accommodate the, in order to, what I felt, what I would feel would be appropriate was to keep the, the side yard setback at 100 feet and keep it at 200 feet, okay? He's going to have fewer units, but it's more neighborhood compatible to, to, and in best interest of the neighborhood. That's the whole point here.
Okay.
From my perspective.
I understand.
But to answer your, your question, they went from four units to two units, and they kept the two end units exactly the way they were, and they just got pushed together, and that's how to, the mayor's point-
Per floor.
It rose.
Right.
But kept the same number of units.
Right.
And, you know, it-
All right, thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Is Joe here? You didn't have to get dressed up for us.
I came from a late deposition, so I apologize for being late. And I won't keep anybody else late, if I may just have a few comments and that's it. Yeah, absolutely, but please-
We, we kept it running just for you, don't worry.
Oh, God, no, please, no. If I can just make a few comments for the record, the Corinthian and Joe Slema, first of all, and thank you all, this esteemed group, and thank you for just a few more moments of your time here about something that's really going to affect generations of us if this thing goes up at 300 feet. Mayor Trentalis, I think you hit it on one of the matters on the head. This doesn't have to go 300 feet. If it goes 200 feet, I think all of our neighborhoods, if it's compatible with what's around it, then I, I really don't see that there's any, any fight there. But for the record, the Corinthian and Sunrise Intercoastal does not agree. I'll keep it fast, but if, if, if this was an airplane, I mean, there's questions on the ground here with everybody here. There seems to be drop, and no, no offense to anybody, but there doesn't seem to be a solid process or that we would all want to have when you're dealing with something this big, this unusual, and this different from what's around the neighborhood. So if it's 100 feet of building above 200 that we're dealing with, I know one thing, once you build it, it's never going to go away. I do know another thing, though, if there's some measure, measure that can get with the developer and work that out, maybe they don't build something so large, there may be a lost profit there. I don't know if there's a way to compromise, but I know, I've sat here during the part that I could catch up with, and, but what I've seen, this appears to be, in football, you have timeouts. If you, you're not sure what you're going to do, you take a timeout, you step back a little bit, spend a little time, and let's figure it out. This is not antagonistic to the developer, but I think it's clear from everybody, it's highly unusual how this thing went from one design to this design without us really knowing or appreciating it. And the cutoff, which was announced, I dare say, I think there's a lot less people here because we got word that, hey, you're not even going to be on the agenda, so thank you for putting us on it. So I don't have the answer, this is outside my area of law, but it seems to be prudent that we afford, and I'm using a legal term, but due process. Let's let everybody get here and let's figure this out, but it's a huge problem that once this thing gets launched, if it's on a technicality of a statute in a few days here, a little, by my calculation, I guess it's a little bit over a week and a half or so, are we really going to sub- subject generations, not just us, but generations that are going to have to, that are going to look at this and, and see this, and it's going to be built? So all I'd ask respectfully is, there seem, I appreciate what this group has said, Your Honor, Mr. Mayor, and this esteemed group, you all have raised extraordinary points that I've, I've been here before on other matters, and it's just, this is extraordinary. I think you all have pointed out some very, very real concerns that need to be addressed. With all due respect to the legal aspects here, being an attorney myself, sometimes you've got to look at, what's the due process? What's the fairness? What's the equity here? And I think it a great, it's a great mistake to go forward with the plan as it is right now. And we would just appreciate and beg of you, let's step back, let's take a bit of a timeout and get this figured out. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you so much. Is there, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay. So, you know, there's some questions to whether or not we have the authority to actually have this hearing. I don't know whether this was a hearing or just an airing out of grievances, but just, I mean, I, I don't know if we should take an official vote, but, I mean, the, the only point of tonight's meeting, if it were, if it were within the approved timeframe with which, in, with, in which this would happen, would allow us to make a decision tonight as to whether or not we want to move forward and have a de novo hearing. I don't even know if there's an appetite on this commission to even do that, if we decided to do that. So without taking a formal vote, yes, Commissioner Sturman?
Okay. Couple thoughts here. And I'm going to get into two items in a minute, but I'm, I'm going to sidetrack before I even begin there. I'm, I'm listening to this, I'm, I, what the heck do I do here? And I think I have an answer, and it's going to sound crazy, but I say crazy-
We would never expect that from you.
I say crazy things all the, all the time. I'm going to say, this is not fair. It's not fair to me, it's not fair to the community, and I'll tell you why in a second, but let me start by saying I do not like the project. I do not like this, I think it's too tall. I think it's setting a precedent. I think it's going to make neighborhood compatibility an issue, and I really don't like that. But it's not fair for me to say because, first of all, this was pulled. This was pulled, I speak briefly to the developer, they told me, oh, the neighbors want X, Y, and Z, but we pulled it, okay, so I didn't look at it then. I didn't look at it, I didn't evaluate it, I didn't go, dive into it, and I come here tonight, next thing you know, boom, hokey pokey, it's off the agenda, it's on the agenda, it's off the, it's back on the agenda tonight. For us to opine upon this is not fair tonight because it was pulled. The, the gentleman who spoke, you know, his neighborhoods, the neighbors didn't know that they were going to be here. It's not fair to talk tonight. And the other thing is, I will always support neighborhood and anti-overdevelopment. I will support the neighborhood, but the question is, I don't know if that's what the neighborhood wants. For me to say I don't like this building is kind of a moot point. It's not what I want. I'm not going to impose my feeling on the neighborhood. If the neighborhood doesn't want this, if the neighborhood thinks it's not compatible, I will back for you. But for me, as an outsider, and this is John's district, I'm an outsider, for me to say, I don't like this for X, Y, and Z, my role is not to impose my thought on you, it's to find out what you want and to back you and advocate for you, but I don't know because it was pulled.
Time's up.
Oh, it's a sign. Happy New Year.
Mayor, your vote is here.
Yes. That's the princess, the princess.
Sun princess.
Okay. So, so two, two, so two thoughts. Number one, the two thoughts that are, number one, the item was, was, was pulled.
Well, this wasn't intention-
No, 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 let me, let me-
This wasn't an intention to, to review it on its merits.
No, but, but, no, but no, the question is whether or not to bring us a de novo. And the issue, whether it's not even worth it to go de novo, I didn't look at it, and I didn't have a chance to evaluate, I don't know what the neighborhood wants. And, and the other thing is the timeline passed. I mean, we went over and over and the timeline passed. And the thing is, I don't know what the heck we're voting on. Unlike Harbor Beach, where we had, even though it was a shortened thing, we at least had a deadline that we could squeeze in a de novo, unlike the other one, Delmo. There's certain ones that we had, we could squeeze it in there, and we could get in under the deadline. Now, I think, no, maybe we should vote on this, and we should have our de novo hearing in September.
September.
It's October, guys, we've missed it already. I mean, you can't, what are we voting on if we've missed the deadline already? I don't understand, no, I think, I think our, I, I came to a conclusion, I think this is what we should do. I think we should table this item. And the reason is, you know, oh, we can't table it, we're going to miss the, you missed it already. You missed, there's nothing to lose. I think we should table this item because I think the public has not been here, it hasn't been noticed, it was pulled, and it's not fair to us opine upon it right now. See if there's any compromises they could, they could, they could work out. I think that's the best compromise to table it. If you're not, it's not like you're in a rush, you already missed the deadline at this point. So that's my thought.
Okay, interesting, okay. Anyone else have any thoughts? Yes.
I do. I, I'm, I'm tending to agree with Commissioner Sturman on some points, but I just want to re, I just want to reiterate something. We all received on September 20th, all of us, five of us received a letter from DSD telling us on the results of the Planning and Zoning Board meeting on September 18th, which approved this building now at a five to two vote. And we were all asked to let the department know if we intended to call it up. So only one person did, that's- it up. So only one person did, that's the mayor. So the mayor wrote back on September 23rd that he wanted to call it up. The other four of us did not send in a notice that we wanted to call it up, which means that we actually were implying that we were okay with the planning and zoning decision. That's just a point of fact.
I don't know if that's, that, that's, 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 you can't, you can't say that one, that one decision means something else. It means that, that none of you chose to call it up. Uh, but today's, today would have been the hearing as to whether or not to call it up. That's, that's how the process works.
If I, if I may jump in on that, so, um, the Vice Mayor raises a question, and following the P and Z meeting, I specifically reached out to the developer and I said, please meet with Mr. Concanon so that we can try and figure out if we can come to any compromise, um, not knowing that we didn't have 30 days for call-up. So my hope in that interim period was to try and get to a compromise. Because the problem that I have with this particular project, as you just heard, the, the two buildings immediately adjacent to the project are in favor of it. The Corinthian to the north and Sunrise Intercoastal to the south, the two further away, are not in favor. So I've, I've got a divided community here. I don't have a united neighborhood. I've got, half my neighborhood wants it, half my neighborhood doesn't want it. And, and that's a challenge, you know, that's the, you know, split the baby kinda thing, which doesn't work in this instance. But I had really hoped that following P and Z, because there was no guarantee this was going to be approved at P and Z. So following the P and Z approval, you know, I suggested to Ms. Crush that she reach out to Jim Concanon. I believe that she did that. Um, but the idea was that there would be an opportunity to have a discussion within the call-up period, not understanding at that point in time that the call-up period was in fact actually tolling. So it, it wasn't necessarily, Vice Mayor, that, that I necessarily agreed with the outcome of P and Z. It's that we were trying to work out that compromise in that period of time.
Except that, except that, um, the applicant knew that he didn't have to do anything else because as far as they were concerned, there was no opportunity for the commission to call it up.
I, I, I don't wanna opine what the applicant may or may not have known or, or to suggest that. I'm simply saying that, no, I just, I just wanna make sure that we're clear on the Vice Mayor's comment that we were all okay with it. It's not that I was necessarily okay with it. It's that I thought we were still in a timeframe to have that conversation.
No, and that's correct. We, we, the letter that we received from DSD said that we had a 30-day period, and they said that, um, heard by the, prior to the end of the 30-day period, October 18th. So they said that we could actually consider, um, on October 1, I'm reading from their email, October 1 today, or October 15th, they said we could discuss this and figure out if we wanted to have a de novo hearing. But, um, so I guess there was still time. As it said, that, subject to a 30-day call-up, so they, I'm trying to see what deadline they gave us to, um.
Today would have been the day to have the hearing on whether or not we wanted.
Which must be heard by the City Commission. Well, this case had to be heard by the City Commission by the end of the 30-day period. So I'm trying to find out from this email when we had to let the department know. What was the deadline that we had to let the department know whether we intended to call this up? What was that deadline? Because I wanna address what Commissioner Herbst is saying here.
It would've been 30 days from planning and zoning.
September, 30 days from the, uh, September 18th meeting?
Eighteenth.
So we're still in that timeframe, actually, according to the original email that we received.
But we already, but I already called it up.
I, no, I understand. I just wanna, I just wanna get all of this fact straight in terms of the timeline, because we're, we're so inundated with contradictory information tonight on timelines and dates. So I understand what Commissioner Herbst is saying. He's saying that we actually still had till October 18th to call it up, right? But you already called it up for this meeting, even though we still had till October 18th to do it, correct?
Correct.
But then when would the de novo hearing had to have been scheduled, according to that original email?
Ella Parker, DSD, um, within 60 days, the de novo would have had to have been set.
So if we had decided tonight, or even decided on October 15th, according to the original email, we would almost had till December to set up a de novo hearing?
Correct.
To set a de novo hearing?
Per the code, yes.
Okay. Good. That helps me. It puts it in perspective. Um, and I understand what Commissioner Sturman is saying about how can we possibly go forward with this. And Commissioner Herbst just explained it perfectly. He's got two buildings on either side of this project that want this to go through, and then the Neighborhood Association and the Corinthian don't want it. So I, I am very curious to hear, and I'm, I see you going down the line, so I need to hear what the District Commissioner has to say. Thank you, Mayor.
I think Commissioner Herbst has already given his opinion. Commissioner Beasley Pittman? You have any thoughts on this?
I do have more, I, I do have more to add.
Oh, okay. Go, go, go ahead.
I was, I was allowing my, my colleagues to weigh in.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
But happy, happy to do it now, if that's okay with you.
Yeah.
Pam?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is an exceptionally difficult, um, challenge for me, because again, I have a divided neighborhood, and, and that's always problematic. Um, we were in the call-up period, and then I saw that the mayor had, had made a motion for call-up. And then shortly thereafter, learned that we're in the, you know, when we, when we find out we're in this 180-day period, that we can't call it up. And that's when I communicated back to the neighborhood after I got, uh, Mr. Spence's, um, legal opinion to that effect. I said, you know, we're not in a position to call it up. And I told him that it was being removed from the agenda. We had a very lengthy conversation. This was a huge part of my agenda review on Monday where we discussed this again at length. Um, what I shared with, what I shared with Jim and with Theo and everyone else on that call is that I am of the opinion that we are bound by the city attorney's opinion. I, I was here when we went through the previous litigation. Um, I'm aware of the facts and circumstances. Um, you know, again, I believe as a matter of law, regardless of what mistakes were made in this process, that we have an obligation to follow the law. If the state statute says we have 180 days and an error was made by us, that, that doesn't burden, uh, the developer and it doesn't give us any rights to assert in litigation. I, I don't think we have a defensible position. And I, as I shared with my, with my residents, and I know they're not happy about this, but I can't in good, uh, faith move forward on something that I know is going to get us into a lawsuit that we are going to lose. So as much as I, I appreciate the fact that we've had this opportunity to have a, a, an incredibly robust discussion, and I think that's a big part of what the neighborhood was looking for, was to have this discussion. And so I think we got there. And I think that's very important. I think there are improvements that we need to make to the process going forward. But again, um, I, I don't believe that we will be well-served by entering into litigation and engaging attorneys to fight this on our behalf when we already have a case history that speaks against us. We are going to lose, and it will cost us money, and the outcome will be the same. And I, I just don't think that's prudent.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Thank you. Um, listening to, um, Dewane when he first came up to, um, give us all of that long explanation and, um, giving us some clarity of the point, I really began to put my, um, concern at that, um, litigation where we could be in a, um, eventually held responsible financially, being, I guess sue would be the word that I would use, um, in this case. Um, I have concerns overall because there is the, um, the process that seemed to have, I seen it broke down somewhere. There was something went definitely wrong with this. And at this point, how do we correct it? Are we here to table it? Are we here to move on? Um, what do we do to assure that, um, we can at least have a conversation to, um, make this, um, comfortable overall for the community? Respecting what the District Commissioner has shared with us, he's in a, a unique situation. All of us right now, I believe, are in a unique situation with making this decision. But, um, I've always been told, you know, um, when things start off wrong, it kinda continues to go wrong and it snowballs. Where do we stop it at? That's my question. Where do we do, what do we do as a commission tonight to rectify this as best as we can?
Okay. Um, anyone else have any further comments?
I, I do.
Yes, go ahead.
So Mayor, I do have one question. So, uh, I'm going back to, uh, to Commissioner Sturman. So Commissioner Sturman, you're suggesting a pause. What do you think that pause is intended to accomplish?
I don't know. I mean, I, I, I seriously.
I just didn't know if you had a plan for it.
I mean, I, I don't know if, um, well, the, the point is, the point is, there's, well, one point is, there's no rush to opine upon this today because the, the deadline's already passed. So there's no reason to, uh, to, there's nothing to vote on today. Because there's, you know, again, like I said, okay, let's, let's vote real quickly so we could schedule a hearing for yesterday. You know, it, it doesn't work that way. Um.
Well, let me ask you this, Commissioner, and I'll ask all of you. Um, if we were within the legal timeframe in which to, to, um, set a de novo hearing, um, are there any members of this commission who would vote to do that?
Now, don't, don't ask that question. It's like, if I, if I was six foot tall, would I be on a, on a, you know, would I be a basketball player? No, because I'm not a good basketball player, but that's another story. But, you know, I mean, let, look, legal, look at it, see what our, what our real answers are. Don't do a knee-jerk. Get a, get a decent opinion, see if the developer could reach out to the community. I mean, we, let's use this time to, to maybe get a little clarity on what the heck we wanna do here. There's no rush at this point because we've already passed the deadline. Don't do a knee-jerk tonight. There's nothing to do tonight.
No, it's not a knee-jerk. It's just a sense.
What do you want us to do tonight?
It's a sense.
What do you want us to do tonight?
I'm saying that, is it moot to even continue further discussing this if there would be no appetite on the commission to move it forward to de novo anyway? I mean, if, if there's no appetite to move it forward, then, then why even belabor the point?
Well, okay.
Well, and I think, I think that's kinda my point, Mayor. I, you know, I, I wanna understand i- if we, if we drag this out any longer, you know, we, what are we accomplishing by doing that? So I just wanna understand what that could possibly yield for us. And I do have a, a, a question. Uh, maybe this is to, to Mr. Spence. Where is he hiding? There you are.
Is he under the table there?
Never hiding, Commissioner, never hiding. No, 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 no. Just, just hide her standing there. I, I don't blame you.
Sure.
Dewane, I, I do have a question. So I, I'm going to make an assumption based on everything that I've heard so far tonight, that our likelihood of prevailing is relatively low if this were to go to trial. Um, if the, if the developer incurs substantial costs between now and that time, um, are we also liable for the additional costs that may be incurred due to delay?
So what, so what I would say, um, and, you know, as, uh, legal counsel, I do have this ethical duty to, and a fiduciary duty to the City Commission to, to provide you with sound legal advice. And that, what is what precipitated my email of Friday advising you based on the history that we've had in terms of litigation. Commissioner Sturman's suggestion does not work in the sense that the prior litigation was clear in how the court viewed the action of the Planning and Zoning Board in that case, and how they would view it very likely in this case as the final decision on the approval, which means that they would be, um, able to, uh, able to receive their development permit at this time. And if they have to go to court to compel us to issue that development court, permit, yes, we would incur costs and fees associated with that.
But he's asking if we, they, just in the, in the delay of the, of the issuance of the permit, are we, that, where there's no court proceedings involved, are we still, um, at risk for having to pay any, um, holding, you know, carrying costs or anything like that?
Well, but I'm, I'm also thinking of attorney's costs, because, you know, we just, we just approved a substantial payment on litigation that we lost in, to the tune of, what, three, four, $500,000, $600,000, I forget. 360, thank you. They, they were asking for a million and we got them to, so, you know, our, our track record on losing cases and paying attorney's fees has not been good in our last couple of cases that we've lost. It's, it's, it's been very expensive for us. So I just wanna make sure, I wanna understand, you know, if, if we lose in this, we, if we, if we think we have a losing case and we move forward and we lose, do we also have to pay attorney's fees?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Let me, let me ask you another question. Maybe I'm using the wrong term. If we quote defer this, the term, maybe I'm using the wrong term. Let's say if we defer this, do we like defer this to date certain? Or, or do we just defer saying, we're not gonna take that up right now? We're not gonna take it up at this particular point? How do, when we use the term, maybe I'm using the wrong term, defer?
I, 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 no, I think you're using the correct term. I'm, I'm just.
I don't wanna say, I'm not saying we're gonna defer this till next Tuesday. I could defer a meeting, let's not take this up now. I'm not saying we're, we're gonna put a date on it.
So, so what, I'm balancing two different processes here. So it's compliance with state law, which we're suggesting based on the testimony has run the 180 days. And I'm balancing our code of ordinance, which you still have the opportunity to follow, but we're saying that there is a conflict with our code and, and state statute. Now, in terms of this hearing, as, as mentioned by staff, from the time of the decision of the Planning and Zoning Board, you have 30 days in which to make a motion to set a de novo hearing. That's that 30-day period. That's the call-up period. And then from that time that that motion is made, you have 60 days in which to set the de novo hearing.
The 30 days is gonna be next meeting, not this meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. But it's already been called up. Already, already did it.
So it's no longer necessary.
So it's no longer necessary. So it's 60 days from today.
If we decide to set the hearing today, but if we take no act, see, we're not, we're not, we're not adjudicating today on the, on the fact. We're not approving or disapproving the project per se. Say, we're just, you have a, something you threw out there, whether or not we wanna have the, uh, the, um, de novo. And if we decide no action, we have no, when, I'm not saying we necessarily table this, but let's say, we say, we're not gonna second this motion. We're not gonna advance this.
And as, as I stated, the, the commission has taken that bold step before with 500 Hendrix. We, uh, the decision, decision was made to protect the community to set a de novo hearing. A de novo hearing was heard. The project was denied. We ended up in court. We lost $62,000 later. At, although, you know, it's not, I don't think it's presidential, but it's something that we need to consider.
Here, here's the question. Um, it sounds like there's no appetite to go forward today. And the question is, we could now, I could, whoever could use two weeks to say, listen, let, Dewane, let's sit down, let's educate us some more, or let's speak to the developer or whatever. We do have one more bite at the apple, but, you know, we'd have to set it, but we don't have to, we don't have to ask.
The only way that we would have a bite at the apple, and this would work in, in terms of sitting with the developer, is if the developer agrees to provide the city with an extension in order to have that occur.
No, no, we have, we have 30 days. We have, we have till October, the next meeting in October.
So they have stated that they deter, that, that they haven't agreed to an extension. So there is no, nothing to say.
We've already lost, that one, we've already lost.
That's what I'm saying. So there is nothing to talk to them about because they don't agree to the fact that we have the authority. Ms. Crush, when she stood up here, said, she consistently put on the record that even what she's saying on the record is with objection to the entire process. So I doubt that there's any communication that can occur.
Okay. So, so another way to phrase this, if we decide not to vote on this tonight, if we decide not to vote on this tonight, we haven't lost anything, because if we might or might not have that 30 days, we're still within that 30-day window from P and Z. And if we do or do not have a right, we, we, either way, we've already lost this September. So nothing, there's nothing urgent upon us to even vote on this.
Yes, procedurally, what you're saying is correct.
There's no urgency to even vote on this tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
Dewane, that's an interesting question. I'm just curious now. So could this be called up a second time?
No.
How many times can you call up an item?
No, you can, you can only call up the item. But the, the motion itself has to occur within 30 days of the final decision. So.
But no, I'm just, I'm trying to understand in the context of what, of what, of what Commissioner Sturman is saying. I'm just curious. So the mayor has called this item up.
Correct.
If it doesn't move forward, I, I think what I heard Commissioner Sturman is saying, we can call it up again at the next meeting, and I don't think we can do that.
Well, he wants to defer it though.
I, that's what I, I understood him as saying deferring, deferring the action.
And we'd still be within the timeframe if we deferred it, right?
Okay. I thought he meant, I thought he meant call it up again. I just wanted to be sure.
be sure I understood what we're talking about here.
I'm not sure what we're talking about really right now.
Wait, wait, that's, that's a good point. So Mr. Mayor, the mayor decided to call it up, but if nobody even makes a motion, and there's no second, and no actions taken, if two weeks from now, two weeks from now, it doesn't die because there was no motion that was even made.
No, it does die.
But two weeks from now, another commissioner can't call it up? Another commissioner?
No.
Or you do not know the answer to that?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that one.
I mean, this, if that's the case, there's no reason to take any action tonight.
Well, but the thing is, as Commissioner Herbst stated, what would be the point? Because the developer has absolutely zero incentive to talk to us anymore from their perspective.
So there's no reason to take any action tonight. We don't have to
I guess the question is, what would be the reason for delaying it to the next meeting?
No, 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 no. I'm not saying to table it to the next meeting. I'm not saying to vote it up or vote it down. I'm saying, look, Dean is going to come up there, says, is anybody going to go ahead? Do I have a motion? And we all crickets. And we say no. There's no reason for any of us to put the motion forward and second it because there's nothing gained and nothing lost by, by opining on it right now.
Okay.
Well, tonight is the night we have to make a decision.
No, that's the whole point. You don't.
We have one more meeting. That is true.
There's no reason to do anything tonight.
But what would, what would be accomplished between now and the next meeting?
Nothing's accomplished. Nothing happens. If we don't, what do you mean? There's, there's nothing to happen tonight.
No, but what would happen in two weeks from now? If we, if we deferred it or tabled
I don't understand why you're asking that question. If nothing happens between two weeks from now, nothing happens. In two weeks, nothing happens. If we, if we, if I meet personally with Dwayne, and we go over it again, it says, listen, you don't, no, each one of us say, there's nothing to do here. And two weeks comes and goes, and none of us calls it up.
Well, it's already been called up. You can't call it up a second.
No, that's not, if you
All right, all right. Let's, let's put some closure to this. First of all, is there anyone else which should speak on this item? There is nobody else. So it doesn't sound like, it doesn't sound like this commission has any interest in, in moving forward on this. I'm getting, I'm not, I, I guess I, I don't want to take a vote because obviously no one wants to vote on it per se. No one wants to take a straw vote on it. So since there's no interest in moving forward, then, you know, all I can say is I'm very disappointed in this entire process. I think that the commission has been short-changed and has been denied its legal right to be able to call up an item and to be able to make a decision on, on a project such as this. Shame on us that we allow any applicant to game the system to the point where we're shut out of the process. We are, it makes, it makes zero sense and no one's taking responsibility for this. And, and it seems to me that we have a complete, it's just a complete shutdown of, of, you know, the whole idea. I mean, we're talking about multimillion-dollar investments here. We're talking about neighborhoods being affected for generations. We're talking about future projects that are now going to be proposed in this area. And they can say, hey, look, there's a 300, 300-foot building. Why can't we build a 300-foot building? Before, we've denied it again and again. But now the new standard is set, is set. You know, I can't, I don't, you know, I went through this whole analysis with Dwayne at the beginning because there are holes, there are holes that, that permeate the review process in this particular case, that I feel that the city has sufficient basis to not move forward with issuing the building permit here, the development, the development permit. Because, because I don't believe the 180 days, within that 180 days, an agreement was made as to an extension. I believe that it expired. And at that point, I believe that no, either we accept the original building or the original building was denied. No one in city staff can make a decision to preclude the city commission from weighing in on this. Nobody. Yet, we're allowing it to happen tonight. It makes zero sense to me whatsoever.
Dean, Dean, you've said this, you've said this numerous times. Susan, I know Anthony, Susan B. Anthony. I mean, I would like, next meeting, to come up in conference, give us a summary, what's the process is, what went wrong, go through the 180 days, where we intervened, why, this is the third time this happened. And the mayor's right. It's not just complaining. Let's do an action thing. By next meeting, give us a synopsis of where it goes, when it goes to DSD, when it goes to planning and zoning, what are the timeframes, when we intervene, when we, and how we have a process to now interject and preserve our 180 days and put that in place. Okay? Action, action item.
We can do that.
Okay, that's, I think that's what you, you would like, Mr. Mayor. Is that right?
Honestly, Commissioner, I don't know, I don't know what the, it's over.
This is the third time.
It has to be fixed.
It has to be fixed.
Yeah, we said that the first two times.
No, no.
All right, let's move on.
Thank you, thank you, City Manager.
And I just want to say thank you to everybody from the community. Jim, Abby, really appreciate you coming out and, and being a part of the process. And please share that. I know I've gotten more emails than I can count. So, you know, the neighborhood has shown a lot of participation and, and passion for this issue. So just, again, I appreciate it. So thank you for the input.
R1, Appointment of Board and Committee Members.
Yes, for the October 15th resolution, Mark Dickerman, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman. That's for the nuisance abatement board. And Public Art and Placement Advisory Board, Lori Frank, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman. And for tonight, Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Linda Fleishman, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman. Carlton Smith, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman. Community Services Board, Jason, William Jason Dunn, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. And Nuisance Abatement Board, Avikdora Pemper, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman. And we have one additional name if we can add to as amended. That's Fred Nesbit, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. And that's for the Fire Rescue Advisory Committee.
Okay, are there any modifications or amendments to these nominations? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
The resolution's been introduced.
And that's as amended.
As amended.
Thank you. A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth at the exhibit attached here too, and are made a part hereof. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and those nominees have now been appointed to these boards and committees. And I want to thank you all for your, your, your commitment to the community and your volunteering, volunteering to be on these boards and committees. R2, quasi-judicial resolution approving vacation of a 15-foot drainage easement located at 3400 North Federal Highway, the Coral Ridge Shopping, Shopping Center Trust. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
Yes, I do. We've worked extensively with the developer and, and with the neighborhood association on this project. So, yes, and site visits.
Okay. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
No disclosures.
I don't think, did we meet on this, Nectaria? I don't think so. Okay. I have no disclosures, except I go shopping there. Vice Mayor?
None.
And Commissioner?
I have a note here that was, is this a, this is R2, right?
Uh huh.
Is this Robert Lockery's?
Well, it's Nectaria Chakis. Yeah, Lockery and Chakis.
Oh, yeah, then we did meet on this, we did meet, yes.
Okay. Just for questions, right? Anyone have any questions on this? There being none, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Move and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and public opinion, excuse me, public opinion is now closed on that. Do I hear someone like to introduce the resolution?
Move. So, so
It's been introduced?
Yes.
I know, we're all getting tired, so it's okay. The R2 resolution has now been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, vacating all of that certain 15-foot drainage easement recorded in the official record book 4092, page 165 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, said easement lying in tract A, re subdivision of a portion of Coral Ridge Galt Edition Number Two, according to plat thereof as recorded in plat book 36, page 15 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located east of North Federal Highway, north of East Oakland Park Boulevard, west of northeast 26th Avenue, and south of northwest 35th Drive, all side land situated, lying and being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. R3, resolution standardizing the allocation of park impact fees. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Yes, I would.
Resolution's been introduced. No one signed up to speak. Any questions? If none, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, establishing a standardized methodology for the expenditure of park impact fees and providing for severability and an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and R3 is now approved. R4, resolution approving the general employees' retirement plans cost of living adjustment of 2.75% for retirees and beneficiaries and providing for a seven-year amortization period. No one has signed up to speak. Someone like to introduce the resolution? Resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the board of trustees of the City of Fort Lauderdale general employees' retirement plans cost of living adjustment of the pensions of retired members who retired before October 1, 2022, and those receiving the members' duration and survivor benefits under section 20-110A2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, effective October 1, 2024, providing for a seven-year amortization period and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. PH1, public hearing resolution adopting minimum annual lease rates and a brokerage commission policy for property available for lease for Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport. No one has signed up to speak. Someone like to introduce the resolution? Resolution's been
We have to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Good point. Someone like to move to close the public hearing?
Got it.
Who, who moved? Is the move seconded? Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Commissioner
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, public hearings are now closed on PH1. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a resolution establishing the minimum annual rent rates for leases of real property at the Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport and adopting a brokerage commission policy for real property available for lease at the Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Now, that's teamwork, yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and PH1's now approved. This is an ordinance of first reading, OFR1, first reading ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations Regarding Landscape and Tree Preservation Requirements. No one has signed up to speak. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Yes.
The ordinance has been introduced. Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending section 47-21 landscaping and tree preservation requirements of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, codification and correction of scriven reserves, and for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
I want to say, Chris, Anthony, you guys, I want to really thank you for bringing this, and Dwayne, the whole group. This is, Dwayne and Tom, and this is a monumental moment in the City of Fort Lauderdale. The tree ordinance has come back. And I'm a 100% yes. Thank you very much. Yes.
Only five years.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and OFR1 is approved on first reading. OFR2, it's a first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale.
Deferred.
That one was
Oh, I'm sorry. That, you wanted to defer that?
Yes, thank you.
Is Mr. Silver here? Okay. OFR3, this is an ordinance amending section 5 of the ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale affecting, excuse me, allowing affiliated agency employees who were in the employ of the affiliated agency as of January 21, 2004, to purchase prior credit service in the general employees' retirement system. So, we have no one who's signed up to speak. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending section 5 of ordinance number C-0405 of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, by including affiliated agency employees who were in the employ of the affiliated agency as of January 21, 2004, among those who are eligible to purchase general employees' retirement system prior service credit and providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions and an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and OFR3 is now approved on first reading. OSR1, second reading, an ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, enacting a new subsection of the city's Code of Ordinances Regarding Unauthorized Public Camping and Public Sleeping. As everybody knows, this is with regard to, this is in connection with the state statute, which extends the prohibition to, to no encampment for 24/7 in the City of Fort Lauderdale. Mr. Dickerman has signed up to speak, as has Trevor Everglade. Mr. Dickerman?
I'm going to take my time because I know everybody wants to go home.
We don't want to go home. We came here waiting with bated breath to see what you had to say tonight.
As much as I'm against this myopic, non-funded mandate by the state, I am hoping, and I've been assured that, one, the homeless, the unhoused individuals in the city are not going to be harassed on a constant basis, that result, going to a park other than violating park rules, the homeless, the unhoused will not be harassed. And I hope that the city will reach out to our faith-based community, as I am going to tomorrow, at my house religion, and see about getting them to allow their parking lot to be used on an overnight. But it's up to the church to do that. And besides that, Shonat to allow Steve and Dr. Sturman.
Okay, thank you so much. Trevor, this is Trevor from Save LGBT.
Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the nonprofit SAVE, which stands for Safeguarding American Values for Everyone. My name is Trevor Everglade, and I am an organizer for Save LGBT, South Florida's longest-serving organization dedicated to protecting people who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer against discrimination. We are here today because 40% of homeless youth identifies LGBTQ. A staggering statistic underscores the urgent need for inclusive and compassionate policies. Homelessness can affect anyone. It is not just an issue for the LGBTQ plus community. It can happen to any family regardless of their background or circumstances. On a personal note, my family and I became homeless after my father was diagnosed with stage IV cancer. Despite being a great university student and having a successful family business, our stability was shattered as my father's illness consumed our finances. We should, well, should we have been arrested for sleeping in a tent? Being jailed would have hindered our ability to get back on our feet and could have jeopardized my father's treatment. It was the grace of not being jailed that allowed us to recover and for my father to continue his care. Criminalizing homelessness would have had devastating consequences for us, as it does for many others. Supporting all individuals experiencing homelessness requires adopting proven alternative approaches. One such approach is the Inclusive Housing First Model, which prioritizes housing as the initial step. By securing housing first, we enable immediate focus on supporting individuals to successfully integrate into the new living environment and build community connections. Housing first improves overall health, well-being, and so, social support networks. Numerous studies show that with adequate support, individuals can achieve long-term housing stability. Tailoring this model to unique needs provides permanent solutions without criminalization, breaking the cycle of homelessness and incarceration, while challenging this approach is more cost-effective than jail. Should we, we should, actually, we should expand existing solutions to develop specialized LGBTQ plus homeless shelters and services, including an inclusive intake process, gender-neutral restrooms, private showers, and inclusive sleeping arrangements. Providing trauma for mental health care and training services providers on LGBTQ plus competency can reduce the long-term effects of criminal on LGBTQ-plus competency can reduce the long-term effects of criminalization and improve service experiences. These inclusive measures can be extended to the benefit of all homeless individuals, ensuring that everyone receives the support and respect they deserve. I urge the commissioners to research these existing alternative solutions rather than jumping to criminalize homelessness. Even if it is a gentle criminalizing with resources and a jail cell, it is still a damaging idea. Everyone should have dignity in the worst days of their life. Thank you for your time and consideration. Let's work together to create a city that supports all its residents with dignity and compassion and provide solutions that extend beyond a cycle of jail cells to real, lasting support.
All right, thank you so much, Trevor. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Tom, you, please reiterate that anyone who's cited under this ordinance is not considered a criminal citation. It's a, it's a non-criminal citation.
That's correct. Somebody has written to you and myself accusing me of not knowing the law. I do know the law because I've been doing it for 50 years and especially municipal law. And a violation of a municipal ordinance is not a criminal violation. You do not report it as a crime.
Okay, so that's a good thing.
Right. Secondly, I want to let, I want to let you know that, two things. I asked the sheriff's general counsel to confirm to me as of today that the sheriff is still denying us and other cities the ability to present municipal ordinance violators to the sheriff's detention facilities. The sheriff has reiterated that he will not accept that. Secondly, I reached out to county attorney's office, said I want an agreement between the city and Broward County. My city will agree that we will enter into an MOU that will require when we present violations to the jail that they will be accepted because the county will direct the sheriff to accept them. And they are looking into that.
They're looking into that.
What does that mean, Tom? They're looking into it?
Well, I have a report back from the county attorney that they've begun a draft of an agreement and they are working through both staff and the county commission to get the support to do this.
Because eventually that'll be a battle between the county commission and the sheriff because the sheriff just issued a statement in his October newsletter today and basically saying, I mean, there's a lot there, but the most important part for us to understand is that, quote, "I have directed our Department of Detention to no longer accept individuals who are brought to the jail for purely municipal ordinance violations."
Right.
So rounding up the homeless and bringing them to the jails in downtown Fort Lauderdale or Pompano Beach is neither a good solution nor an available one. So that was just issued as a statement.
Right, that's what I was reading from today. That was sent to me by the general counsel's office for the sheriff. So secondly, what that does, it goes way beyond homeless. It requires any municipal, of any city, not to be able to accept, which is, I won't get into my personal opinion on that. But the other thing is that the, I was told by the sheriff's general counsel, it's a county jail, not a city municipal detention facility. If you have an agreement with the county that we have to accept them, we will. That's what I'm working on.
So we have to, we have to work on that then?
That's what I'm working on.
So let me ask you this. If a violation is determined based on state statute, that's not a municipal violation?
That's correct.
So they do have to accept them under the state statute?
And the police chief instructed staff two weeks ago by a bulletin that in the meantime, so arrest under trespass, if you have to arrest at all. We don't, nobody wants to have to arrest unless they don't listen. But arrests under the state law for trespass, they can be presented and they can be incarcerated under the state law.
But that's a criminal act.
That is a criminal act, which we don't want to do, but we don't have a choice at the current time.
Right. Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments with regard to this item?
Criminal, that means it goes on your record?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, and a municipal thing would not go on your record. Trespass goes on your record?
I'm sorry?
A trespass will go on your record?
As a state law violation, if you're convicted of it, yes.
Okay, but I mean, but a municipal one...
A municipal ordinance typically will say, if you're convicted of a crime, the answer would be no, because you're not if you're convicted of a municipal ordinance violation.
All right, thank you. Do I hear a motion? Excuse me, would someone like to introduce the ordinance? It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, enacting a new section 16-32 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, prohibiting unauthorized public camping or public sleeping, providing for correction of scriven reserves, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, and that ordinance is now approved on second reading. We have two walk-ons.
Mr. Mayor, I also, excuse me, I want to make sure that we sign this tonight while we're here so it's effective before we leave the room. I want to be able to, have the police be able to use this.
What incentive are you going to give me to want to stay?
I got M&amp;M's.
Do you have M&amp;M's? Okay, that's all I ask. Quid pro quo.
We two have two walk-ons now.
Yeah, I know, I'm getting to those right now. We have a walk-on with regard to a resolution for the school board. Have you all had an opportunity to review it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, if there are, if there are no questions, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, requesting the school board of Broward County, Florida, to retain possession of school sites considered for closure in order to preserve an opportunity for school expansion in the future. Engage with local schools, communities prior to redesigning, repurposing, or closing any schools. Consider the need for family literacy and early childhood learning centers and suggested alternative uses in any of the redesigned plan and providing for distribution of this resolution in an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?[1557.88]